Good evening. This work session of the common council is now called to order at 5:30 PM. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Gates.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miles.
Here.
Councilmember Cruss.
Here.
Councilmember Leonfelter.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Wade.
Here.
Councilmember Yoakam.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. All work session items listed are for discussion only. No action can or will be taken. The primary purpose of the work session meetings is to provide the city council with the opportunity for in-depth discussion and study of specific subjects. Public comment is not provided for on the agenda and may be made only as approved by consensus of the council. In appropriate circumstances, a brief presentation may be permitted by a member of the public or another interested party on the agenda item if invited by the mayor or city manager to do so. The mayor may limit or end the time for such presentations. First item on the work session agenda is the TPT Sales Tax Collections Report.
Thank you, Mayor Gates. Members of council, good evening. At your suggestion, the staff has prepared a report on TPT collections for the first quarter, which would be January, February, March for us, but in terms of when they were paid, November, December, January. And Tina Moline is the person primarily responsible for that work, so I'm just going to ask Tina to go through the first quarterly report and let you know that we plan to have a second quarterly report and a third quarterly report and a fourth quarterly report as well, same general format. Tina?
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council. So as Mr. Bacon stated, tonight is our first TPT collections report for the first quarter of our TPT rate increase, which is the taxpayer collection period of November 2017 through January 2018 and the city's collection period of January through March. The purpose of tonight's agenda item is to provide some historical and year-to-date TPT collections, as well as provide a summary of the TPT collections for the taxpayer collection period of November 2017 through January 2018, and then to discuss the impact of the additional 1% TPT rate. Yes, sir.
Is your mic on?
I need to get it closer to me. Thank you very much. That's much better, right?
It is.
So as we begin, I want to talk about a few terms that are going to come up through tonight's presentation. The taxpayer collection period, which as I stated, that's when the taxpayer or the merchant, as the city refers to them, collects the taxes from its customers. Then there's the reporting period, and that's when the taxpayers have to actually report those collections to the Department of Revenue, which is the month after they collect them. And then there's the city collection period, which is the month after that, typically the month after that, that we actually collect those taxes. It's about a two-month lag time from the time that the merchants collect the tax to the time that we receive those taxes. And then business codes. So every taxpayer must file their taxes using a certain business code. So for instance, if you're selling tangible personal property or you're selling prepared foods, then you are required to file under one of these business codes. Now, each of these business codes, or some of these business codes, have a multiple of business codes underneath them, but for tonight's reporting purposes and going forward, I'm going to compile those multiple codes into a broader category. And as you'll see here, I think there's a total of about eight different categories. So talking about the business codes and looking at our TPT collections by business code, retail and use tax, that business code provides us with over 60% of our TPT collections. Our second performer, our restaurants and bars, then hotels, construction, utilities, residential and commercial leases, TPP rentals and leases, and then those other miscellaneous Looking at the year-to-date TPT collection comparisons over the last three years, again year-to-date, excluding the additional 1%, which is important for comparison purposes and for impact purposes, and then looking, of course, to include including the additional 1%. Excluding the additional 1% from fiscal year 16 to 17, we experienced a 4.1% growth rate in our overall TPT collections. And so far this year, we have experienced a 7% increase in our TPT. Do anticipate that to remain pretty level. I'm estimating more than a 5% increase for fiscal year 18, which is more than what we typically will estimate. And then including the additional 1%, of course, it's much larger than the excluding additional 1%. We're experiencing 19% increase in our collections. So more importantly, when we look at our year-to-date TPT collections, we want to look at them by business code, which is important for tonight's discussion as well. And so when we look at our collections, comparing them to fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18, year-to-date, you're going to see that our retail and use tax has increased by more than 7%. Our restaurants and bars have decreased. However, that is not a trend because of the last three months. That is a trend that we have seen over the last nine months to a year, and that has to do with some delinquent taxpayers that we are working with the Department of Revenue on. And again, this is not what we are experiencing because of the last three months. I just want to make that very clear. Hotels, we are also experiencing an increased construction. You can just look around, and of course, there's an increase. Utilities are down slightly. Residential and commercial leases are up also, and I do want to point this particular category out because they are not impacted by that increase. Residential and commercial leases are taxed at 2%, and any increase to that particular category is required to go to the voters. The council cannot approve an increase in that particular category or business code. Then we have our TPP rentals and leases, which are tangible personal property rentals and leases, are up slightly. And then that other category, which is a very small dollar amount in the grand scheme of things, is also up. So let's look at the last three months of our TPT collections for these business codes, which is real important to us right now. It's a very big interest. And so we're going to compare them for the three months, from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year 17 to fiscal year 18. You're going to see retail and use are largest revenue producer. The fiscal year 17 increase was 6.4%. We are experiencing very similar growth at 6.37%. Restaurants and bars are down, but again, I've discussed the reasoning behind that. Hotels are up, construction is up, utilities are up. Our residential and commercial leases are down, but they are not impacted by the increase. TPP rentals and leases are up slightly, but a very small reporting category. And then our other category also is down, again, a very small amount of our revenue collections. Overall, year-to-year, we are down slightly, less than a quarter percent for the three So looking at our retail and use TPT collection comparisons for the three months and looking at them month by month, and looking at them from 16 to 17 to 18 and excluding the additional 1%, you're going to see that January, which are the November collections for the merchants, we are down slightly in fiscal year 18 of 6.94%. But when we look at the next two months, you'll see that we are up, and it doesn't surprise me that the November or January and December or February numbers are that way. And the reason being is that normally, over the last 10 to 12 years, the January collections have always been the largest month of collections for the city of Kingman. However, that was not the case this year. December was actually the largest month, so that explains why November possibly is lower for fiscal year 18 than what it should be or what you would think it should be. So Tri-City comparisons, and this is just some data. I wanted to be able to provide something to you because, of course, comments that have been made since our increase is that there would be leakage to Bullhead City and Lake Havasu for some of those larger purchases. So in just conversations with those cities, they did not notice a noticeable increase in any of the categories that we report on during these three months. Not noticeable. They said that they are experiencing the same growth rate that they typically have been experiencing, so not a noticeable increase. When we look at our January retail, so the first chart is the retail, the bottom chart is overall. When we look at the January, the February, and the March retail, you'll see that the city of Kingman is outperforming the other two cities. And February, those two cities were actually down in their retail and we were up. Looking in the January to March year-over-year comparison by city for total TPT, it's a different story. Lake Havasu actually has outperformed the city of Kingman, and that is normal. That is not something new this year. That is normal. And their restaurant and bar tax and their hotel tax is much higher than the city of Kingman, so it doesn't surprise me that they're overall is much better performers than just their retail. So what does the 1% increase look like? And are we on track to meet our projections? So wanted to give you three months, the first three months of our collections, based on what we're budgeting year-over-year, and I did just a straight-line budget for this fiscal year, and then looking at our actual collections. So for the first month of collections, you'll see that we're down slightly from what we budgeted. The second month of collections, definitely above where we budgeted. And the third month of collections, definitely below where we budgeted. However, March is typically one of our very lowest collection months, if not the lowest collection months. So it doesn't surprise me, and it's not alerting or alarming. So comparing our budget to what we've actually collected, we're down 0.28%. So do I think still that we will meet our projections at this time? I do still believe that we will meet our projections. Looking at what has been deposited into the pavement preservation fund and the capital improvement projects fund, they each have received year-to-date $772,847.50. So in conclusion, looking at the first nine months of our TPT collections, we should experience more than a 5% growth rate at fiscal year-end, excluding the additional 1%. And then in reviewing the business codes as a whole, and that is not individual taxpayers, that is not individual groups of taxpayers, that is our business codes as a whole, the 1% rate increase hasn't affected customer spending. However, to make an informed and sound analysis, we would certainly want a longer evaluation period than just the first three months. That may change down the road. At this point, as I stated, the original projection of $3.1 million on each of those half-percent increases, I do believe is, can still be met and will still be met. With that, I will take any questions.
Thank you. Questions of staff? Anyone? Thank you for that update.
Yep, absolutely.
Moving on to item two, the expenditure limitation options.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. Tina's not going anywhere. She's got this item as well. As she's getting ready, I should remind members of council that we are going to ask you to make a decision about how to go forward during your business meeting tonight. So Tina?
Yep, absolutely. So good evening again. So this is a continuation of the March work session where we talked about the expenditure limitation options. Wanted to bring back more information for you so that you could make a decision this evening. And so the purpose of tonight is to review and discuss those options and then provide you with enough background information so that you could make a decision, an informed decision, in tonight's business agenda. Background on the expenditure limitation. The state-imposed expenditure limitation was passed by Arizona voters in 1980. It limits cities and towns' annual expenditures. It does not take into consideration increases in services or services that are provided to non-residents, and the state constitution allows for cities and towns to operate under an expenditure limitation other than the state-imposed expenditure limitation. What are those options? We have the permanent base adjustment option, which permanently adjusts that 1980 base limitation that is imposed by the state. It is required to go to the voters. If it's approved, it remains in place and doesn't go back to the voters unless the permanent base needs to be adjusted or unless the city decides to elect a home rule option. Then there's the home rule with exclusions option. It allows for additional expenditures to be excluded from the expenditure limitation calculation. We call those voter-approved exclusions. This must go to the voters every four years, and this is currently the option that the city of Kingman falls under. Then there is the pure home rule option. This particular option adjusts the expenditure limitation to meet the city's budget. It removes all constitutional exclusions. It does not include voter-approved exclusions, and it also must go to the voters every four Expenditure limitations. So there are 79. I think in my last report, I said 78. Since then, we've got an updated list that includes 79 cities and towns actually operate under an option other than the state imposed. I did provide that list to you in your agenda packet, so you can see which cities fall under which category. 28 of them operate under the permanent base adjustment, and 51 of them operate under home rule. Of those home rule cities, only two of them operate under the home rule with exclusions. That is the city of Kingman and the city of Phoenix. I did make a note that the Lake Havasu city currently falls under the state-imposed limitation that they are taking to their voters. I said in November, it's actually in August, they'll be taking to their voters the permanent base adjustment option this year. So that'll be another one that'll be added to the list if it gets approved. Oh, that's terrible. So permanent base adjustment. A city must still operate within the state-imposed limit, but the base year of 1980 is permanently adjusted to the adjustment approved by the voters. Now, there is no restriction on that basis adjustment, meaning you can increase it by 10%, by millions of dollars, whatever you choose to do. The constitutional exclusions still apply, but the voter-approved exclusions don't, they go away. You cannot have voter-approved exclusions under the permanent base adjustment. So to kind of see how this would look, I'm using fiscal year, our fiscal year 18 numbers to give you an idea. So the first table is the actual limitation itself, and then the bottom table is the calculation. So when we look at the limitation, I'm comparing each of these to the state-imposed limitation, so you can see the difference there. So the state-imposed 1980 base limit is $4.4 million, which equates to about $43.5 million in an expenditure limitation. If we chose something like the permanent base adjustment and used an $8 million permanent base, that would change the base limit to $8 million, which you'll see how that increases the expenditure limitation to $78.6 million. So how does that calculation work for us? The state-imposed and the permanent base budgeted expenditures are both $117.3 million. We both, under both options, you get to exclude the constitutional exclusions, leaving your amount that's subject to the expenditure limitation the same. The difference is what the expenditure limitation is, which you'll see circled. And so if we were to have, if we were to use the state-imposed expenditure limitation, we would exceed the expenditure limitation by over $29 million. The other option, you'll see, we have a 5.4 positive variance. Home rule with exclusions, again, that's what the city falls under, and a city must still operate within the state-imposed limit. Constitutional exclusions may still apply, and voter-approved exclusions apply. You'll see here that the 1980 base limit does not change, nor does the expenditure limitation change for either state-imposed or home rule with exclusions. The piece that does change down in the calculation below is that under the home rule with exclusions, you get that additional $31 million in voter-approved exclusions, which allows us to fall under the expenditure limitation by about $1.8 million for fiscal year 18. Under the pure home rule, a city's expenditure limitation equals its budgeted expenditures, and you get no exclusions, but you don't need those exclusions because what you budget is what you get to spend. So you'll see there is no base limit, there is no expenditure limitation, and you'll see there is no difference in the limitation calculation for that column because, again, what you budget is what you get to spend. So I've talked about exclusions. What are those exclusions? We have our constitutional exclusions, which for the city of Kingman, those are our grant expenditures, which exclude any city match. It's also our flood control expenditures, because our only revenue source for our flood control expenditures comes from Mojave County. Debt service, our internal service funds, which are already included in department budgets, a majority of the HERF revenues. Now, that's our state-shared HERF revenues, not our pavement preservation TPT, not our restaurant and bar tax that's dedicated to streets, just the HERF revenues. And then construction funds, if they're financed. And then our voter-approved exclusions, as I stated, are our enterprise funds. So looking ahead, the city's current home rule option expires in fiscal year 20, which means that an alternative must go to the voters in November of 2018. Now, taking an alternative to the voters does not mean that we're asking voters to approve of us expending more than our collections. It's just asking them to allow us to spend what we have already collected and what is in our cash reserves. Considerations that we need to take when we're selecting an alternative that may increase our budget, our public safety, of course, PSPRS, our pavement preservation. As our TPT increases, we're going to want to spend that money, and in order to do so, we need to have the flexibility to do so. Capital projects that are not funded with debt service, so sometimes we cash fund some parks, landscaping, bike pathways, those sorts of projects with cash. Any sort of cart expansion would apply to this expenditure limitation. Annexations and the airport. For fiscal year 19, we will have to include any sort of airport appropriations in our expenditure limitation, but it would certainly apply for a voter-approved exclusion if we were to take that option to the voters. So the fiscal year 19 preliminary expenditure limitation numbers have been released. It's an increase to the city's fiscal year 18 number by about 3% or $1.6 million. On average, over the last four to five years, we've experienced about 2% to 2.5% increase. So this year is a little bit larger. For 19, it's going to be a little bit larger of an increase than what we've experienced in the past. It is unknown what fiscal year 20 is going to look like, which makes it difficult to project what fiscal year 20's limitation calculation would be as well, and whether or not home rule with exclusions is the option to go forward with. But if we do look ahead, and we can at least look at what fiscal year 19 might look like. Now, I want to put full disclosure in here that this is very, 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 very preliminary numbers for fiscal year 19. We have only barely met with the departments this week, and the city manager and I still have a lot of work to do, but putting some numbers together so you could get an idea of what fiscal year 19 might look like. We have budgeted, and I put all four options there for you to compare. We have budgeted expenditures of $164.8 million. Of that $164.8 million, almost $91 million would be excluded, and that's because debt financing, any sort of big capital improvement projects are included in that number. Then we have voter-approved exclusions on the options that allow that, which are $29.8 million under our existing option, which, as you see, the amount subject to the expenditure limitation across the board varies, as well as the expenditure limitation itself. And you'll see how each of those options affects our expenditures, our differences, rather, that we have left over and that we fall below or would not meet, depending on the option that you would select. So the fiscal year 19 budget figure includes $2 million in airport appropriations. And as I said, this would qualify as a voter exclusion, a voter-approved exclusion if we were to take the home rule with exclusions to the voters. So if the home rule option, pure or with exclusions, is taken to the voters and does not pass, then we must wait two years to take the home rule option back to the voters. We must revert to the state-imposed limitation until that option is elected, which, as you see, that's a $30 million. We would surpass that by $30 million, meaning we would have to cut at least $30 million in our budget. And a permanent base adjustment could go to the voters, but we would still have to wait another year to take it to the voters. If a permanent base adjustment option was taken to the voters and did not pass, then we would still be required to revert to the state-imposed limitation, but with a permanent base adjustment, you can take it to the voters the next year. So the next steps are, if a home rule option is desired, either pure or with exclusions, then a notice of intent to hold two public hearings will need to be adopted tonight. And the public hearings will be held in June. A resolution would be approved, and then we would pass that in a special meeting, the second meeting in June. If the permanent base adjustment options desired, then a resolution approving of that would be required, but there are no public hearings that are required. It would just be a resolution that would be approved in the second meeting in June. Are there questions?
Thank you.
I'd just like a follow-up comment from the last work session that we had on this topic, and that is that at the time that Tina and I were before you, we were not considering the airport to be eligible for exclusion. The thing that has changed our opinion about that is that we intend to treat it as an enterprise fund of the city, because we believe it is an enterprise fund of the city. It functions the same way as any other enterprise fund, which is that its expenses are a function of what revenues are generated for it. And so because of that, we don't have the concern tonight near to the level we did last time we spoke, because as Tina's presentation indicated, our full expectation, if the city is to carry the airport on its financial records, is to treat it as an enterprise fund. And that's why putting a ballot measure before the voters of home rule with exclusions, which is a continuation of their current approach, is a lot more feasible alternative than we might have suggested last month when we were here.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff?
I did have one question. I tried to do a little research on this as well, just to educate myself, but I'd like to ask, so 51 cities in the state of Arizona are operating under some form of home rule option, either home rule with exclusions or pure home rule. Most of those are operating under a pure home rule option, with the exclusions being Phoenix and Kingman. Is that correct? What are the, why would we not want to go after a pure home rule option is what I would ask?
Actually, I think you might want to do that in a couple of years. I just, I think that people are comfortable with the home rule with exclusion option that we currently have. Tina and I both believe, as you saw in the presentation, that we're going to be able to sustain in the short term. And you understand, the long term on home rule options is only four years anyway, so by short term, I'm talking two years. And that if the council wanted to consider going to the ballot in 2020 to join the other cities on that 49-city list, that would obviously be an option. We just, we think the consequences of a failed home rule are pretty dramatic, as I think Tina's presentation outlined. And we further believe that the community is comfortable with the home rule with exclusions alternative, has voted in support of that for the last several elections, and would be an appropriate prudent course to take in 2018.
Can I ask a follow-up question to my follow-up question?
Absolutely.
Thanks. Well, I understand the history of it and that it's been this way for quite some time.
Right.
But in the progression of any city, there's going to come a point where you have to make that change, right?
Yeah.
Or that, there's been 40-something cities that have made that change.
Correct.
And at what point is that? I mean, I hear that you, I hear you saying that the community is comfortable, but that's kind of an...
I just suggested one, actually, 2020 would be the time that I would think that you would want to consider changing the approach. And obviously, one of those choices would be to use the approach that 49 of the 51 cities use. You could look at other options if you want, but I just, I think it's important, considering the consequences of a no vote on home rule, to always be in a position where the city has the ability to provide the basic services that we offer, which I don't have to give you the list, but it's everything from police and fire and parks. And so if you have a four-year window and are asking the people to consider changing it in the middle of that four years, and it isn't successful, you're still with home rule with exclusions. If you ask them to do it now, which is at the end of the four-year period, and it fails, you're in a pretty uncomfortable position in terms of having to comply with the state requirements for two years at a minimum before you can go back. So to me, it's, the answer to your question is, I would consider this for a 2020 ballot if you wanted to change the method, but in the short term, from my perspective, the community's comfortable with home rule with exclusions and would be an approach which we should hope and expect the majority of the residents would support again.
Thank you. Does that answer your question?
That makes sense to me. Thank you. It's logical.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you for that presentation.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Moving on to item three. Sent in... Moving on to item three, Centennial Park addition.
Thank you. Mike Miersman is here tonight to talk about Centennial Park additions, and this is the property which is adjacent to the park, the current park, and is not owned, he's going to say this to you in the presentation, and he always appreciates when I steal his first five slides, but it's property the city doesn't own. This is actually owned by the county, and there have been two really good ideas developed about how to use that property, and Mike's going to give you an introduction on one of those options, and then the Elks and Fishing Game are here tonight to talk about the other one with you, so here's Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you. What we're here to talk about is a possible addition to Centennial Park, and the property is approximately 24 acres, and it's bordered by the Mojave Wash on the west, Burbank Street on the east, and Beverly Avenue on the south. This is a picture of the property, and there's been, the property's owned by Mojave County, as Jim said, and there's been discussion with a group from the Kingman Elks Club in Mojave County about the possibility of putting a five-acre lake in that area. And what I'm here to talk about is both, if with a lake, and in the event the lake doesn't happen, some other possibilities. As we said, it's county-owned property. There would have to be details worked out with the county, a long-term lease with the county, a possible land swap if the city had property that the county would be interested of equal value, or an outright purchase of the land. There's enough property in this area without a lake to have between six and eight full-size soccer fields, and this is a picture of, with the six soccer fields. This would give us the much-needed turf sports play areas that we've been talking about in our capital improvement projects for the past five years. With the growth of soccer, this would be an awesome facility for soccer. The amenities we could have, this is a list of the different amenities that the park and the total dollar value of those amenities. Ramadas for people to have picnics at, obviously, an ADA playground, exercise equipment and a walking path, footsoil courts that would be the same as four pickleball courts. They could be utilized for both, just depending on the season or the time. Obviously, parking lot, and the total on that is, those amenities is $1.4 million, and I'm going to use those amenities in all the various field parks we talked about with four, with six, with eight. So another important aspect would have to be the consideration of what kind of turf that we would want to have, and this slide shows per field, the cost if you had natural grass that's seeded, and if you decided to have synthetic turf, which synthetic turf is more costly, but the annual cost of maintaining it per year is less. And if you seed it, this is the cost, $334,000 is per field seeded, and the annual maintenance cost on that is $150,000 a year. And if you sodded it, it would be about 20, 25% higher than that seeded cost. And if you synthetic turf, it's $700,000 and $50,000 a year to maintain. With synthetic turf, there's some, a couple of issues that I've heard brought up, that one of the things in the desert, the life expectancy of it is between 10 and 15 years. That depends on who you talk to, then it's all has to be replaced. And another concern with it is it's a very hot surface to play on with the heat and the sun that we have. Also, they all, they both have to have irrigation as well. Even with synthetic turf, you have to have irrigation. Another issue would be lighting, obviously, and we learned a little bit about lighting this year, thanks to the Kingman Youth Soccer League and that project that we just finished, and it's a great improvement there, but for four fields, to light four fields would be $464,000. To light six fields would be $700,000. To light all eight fields, if we had an eight-field complex, would be $960,000. Additional costs would be permitting, obviously, soil and excavation, earthwork, staff to run and maintain the facility, seed, soil, sod, whatever, do you decide to go which direction, fencing. Installation and ongoing costs would be electricity, water and sewer, irrigation, as I mentioned earlier, maintenance costs, and to just clean and repair the park and the facilities. This slide is, shows a park, the total park cost for an eight-soccer-field complex, and I have, the column on the right is with synthetic turf, and the column on the left is with natural grass that's seeded. And the total for the seeded is $5.1 million and $1,002,000 to maintain per year, and the synthetic turf would be $8.1 million and $400,000 to maintain per year. This slide is if it was a six-field park complex, and this is, this is total park cost, it's not just the fields. And this is with the amenities that I brought up earlier that are included in there. Six fields would be $4.2 million, $900,000 of maintenance, and synthetic turf would be $6.4 million with $300,000 maintenance. And this is a picture of the proposed lake, and Bill may have slides, I'm not sure, but, and with a proposed lake, you could have four soccer fields included, and all the other same amenities that we talked about. With the five-acre lake, like I said, you have four soccer fields. You could have a repurpose splash pad where the water is potable, water on the splash pad drains into the lake, and then you pump it out at night and use it as the irrigation. Very good use of the water a couple of different times, so that would be a very good thing. With, and with a, you'd have to have a pumping station to pump that water back out, and that's about $30,000. Aeration equipment, you'd have to have to keep the lake clean. Lake management is important, debris and litter removal. Water's another consideration, water in the pond and keeping that up clean is very important, the routine maintenance and testing of the water. Aquatic weed control, mosquitoes, geese control, and silt accumulation, which I don't think is too much of a problem in the desert unless we get a lot of monsoons and rains, I guess. Lake management, the estimated cost is between $50,000 and $70,000 a year for a five-acre lake, from the information that I've found. If not properly maintained, lakes can silt over, become overgrown with aquatic weeds, and become home to undesirable wildlife, and even become health hazards. That's why it's crucial that if we have a lake, that we budget the money and really take good care of it. So here's the information on a total park with the four soccer fields. With a natural turf, it'd be $3.3 million, $600,000 to maintain. With synthetic fields, it would be $4.8 million with $200,000 of annual maintenance. And that's about all I have, and as I said, I'll be turning this over to Bill, and if you have any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
I have one. Going to safety issues, I hear that the holes in the natural grass are a real issue. Is that something that the turf would address, the synthetic turf, and also, is there any way to cool it?
Yeah, you cool it with water, that's why you have the irrigation. And with the, with the natural grass, the more soccer fields we have, the better conditioning you'd be able to keep those soccer fields in. The fields we have now are multipurpose fields that are used for everything all day. They're used for phys ed classes, they're used for, at recess by the schools that are near the park, so, and then they're used for soccer, for football, for everything, so they really take a real beating. And if we can get on a really good top dressing program, that's going to help that as well.
Answer your question? Councilmember Chris?
With synthetic turf, it still would qualify as a regulation soccer field, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are gophers a problem? Are gophers a problem with the natural? I thought, I know they are in some areas.
With both, they can be a problem with both, synthetic turf and natural.
Oh, they can with the synthetic?
And natural grass, yeah.
Okay.
I had a quick question. I know that we've had discussions with the county about the, this proposed area. I know that they were primarily enthusiastic about the idea of a lake there. I noticed that some of these proposals don't have the lake and would just be soccer fields. Do you know if they would even be willing to part with that land if we were to propose one of the, you know, one of these proposals that does not contain a lake on it? Do we, how far in the discussions are we, do you think?
Not far. We've basically talked to one commission member, I think, regarding that, but, and I don't know how much discussion's been about a lake. I was involved in a couple of meetings, but...
So let me try to address that, Councilmember Wade, Mary Gates, members of council. The presentation Mike just gave represented, I think on his second slide, that we don't own the property. We don't own the property. We have, in the time I've been here, had not had discussions with the county about conveying the property to the city. We had one meeting about the concept of the, of the lake alternative, if you will, and one of the things that I remember from that meeting is that the county folks reminded me that they still own the property, and so that would need to be something that would be worked out. There have been conversations, I understand, from the Elks Fishing Game folks about how that transfer would work, and I think they've appeared before the county as well, but the city government itself has not approached, and in fact, that's a good segue in introducing Bill. All of you know that Bill's on staff for the city of Kingman, but to his credit, Bill asked me, when we were putting this item on the work session, if he could appear here tonight, not as a member of the city staff, but as a member of the Elks, because he's been involved with this project as an elk for a very long time. So when you hear Bill tonight, you'll be hearing somebody who looks like a city staffer, but is actually here representing the Elks. If there was somebody else had a question...
Thank you. We had a question. Councilmember Lincoln Felter?
I'll wait till the speakers are complete.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bacon. It is really a pretty good segue, because I think to answer your question, kind of starts off with, with an introduction of not only myself, like Mr. Bacon said, but we've also got representatives here from the Elks Fishing for Smiles program and Arizona Game and Fish. Matt Schmeele is here. In case I have missed any of the details, is this Mike working? It seems like it's working in and out. But what I'd like to do is just explain to you a little bit about how we got started. The Elks, the Elks and the Arizona Game and Fish have put together this program for years, a community fishing program. Well, what we did was identify a need in the community. Let me get my... We identified a need in the community to have, provide recreational and fishing opportunities for Kingman youth in an area where they could either ride their bike to or walk. Once we identified that goal, we did go to the county, and we met with the county officials, talked to them about the property that is in question right now. In May of 15, when we gave them a list of prioritized locations that we thought might work, the county themselves, Mr. Hendrick suggested this property be looked at. So when we did, the following year, in June of 16, the supervisors agreed to take a $100,000 grant from Arizona Game and Fish as seed money toward this project. The seed money is part of the Game and Fish's Community Waters Program that basically plants the seed for this kind of project within the community. That was in 16. I'm not very organized here tonight. So where we are tonight, basically having, having that seed money established with, with the county, they agreed to enter into an agreement with us, long-term, to use this property for, at the point, at that point was a 10-acre lake. We received a commitment of $300,000 for construction for Arizona Elks, from Arizona Elks major projects. When we, when we put the grant proposal together, it's, it's a matter of bringing all of these partners together to see one, to see one good possible vision. When you look at the property and you see the potential, we showed that to the Game and Fish, I mean, to the, to the Elks Major Projects people, and they agreed that this really has, could have a big impact on the community. The county agreed, now we're asking the city to look at the same thing. So with the $300,000 that we have from the Elks major projects, the $100,000 that we have from Game and Fish, with the possibility, the greater possibility of more funds coming, we could really develop a good partnership. You'd have the county owning the land, you'd have the Game and Fish helping with construction and lake management, you'd have the city parks department eventually helping out with maintenance of, of the park and the other, what now is being proposed as the soccer fields at the north end. We have another $200,000 grant application being strongly considered by the Arizona Sportsmans for Wildlife Conservation. They have a $200,000 application that they really, they would really like to fund us, but they will not move until we have a decision from, from the city, to see where the city stands on, on this project and, and its commitment towards, towards the project. We've looked at all aspects of the, of the lake. Lake management, again, would be covered by Arizona Game and Fish. The parks, there's a look at our, who our partners would be. We've got letters of support from other organizations. The, one of the local Rotary Clubs is already committed to building a complete accessible playground on-site. We all saw how, how the Seroptimist Club brought together building a splash pad. They've expressed an interest of possibly doing another one of those. Local, local fishing and sportsman's organizations have expressed an interest. We've got letters of support from the senior center, including lake activities as part of their senior programs. Those agencies are starting to lean more now towards family kind of activities, so grandkids could come and visit grandma and grandpa at the, at the senior center, or grandparents could take their grandkids to the senior center and be part of the activities nearby the lake. So we've got, so far, we've got a lot of good community support. Now, let's see, how would we restart the... I've got a short video here, I want you to see if I can get it. There it goes. So this is just kind of an air... So this is just kind of an aerial conceptual vision of what the lake could look like. We've included walking bridges over Mojave Wash, picture bicycles. Now, keep in mind, this was a 10-acre lake prior to the suggestion of, of additional soccer fields, but we were pretty ambitious when we first started about three years ago. But we, you know, we look at it not only just from the, from the fishing and, and activity standpoint for the community, but I think it's important to consider the economic impact it, it could have. Matt has some figures on Fane Lake in Prescott. The location that, that we have here, if you're driving west on, on I-40 and you look over to the right and you see this big, beautiful Centennial Park, and now you've got an expansion with some, some community waters, a dog park, part of the library expansion, you've got these activities that are going on. I, I think it really leads, it, it could really add to what Kingman could be more than just a stop on the side of the road and encourage people to stop and get off and spend a couple days. It's close to the hospital, could provide a nice break from family members who are visiting people in the hospital. The beneficiaries are, are all over. If you just look all around Kingman, we've got, you know, the seniors, the seniors, it's centrally located. There's just a lot of potential. These are examples of lakes in other parts of the state. I think Yuma's got four of them. Fane Lake up in Prescott is a real popular one that Game and Fish manages. Game and Fish would stock the lake on a, on a regular basis, depending on the, on the time of year and what kind of species would, would thrive. Some details about the lake. Healthy lakes range, you know, anywhere from one to 10 acres. Preferably, a lake in this area, in our climate, with the kind of weather that we have, nothing, nothing smaller than five acres would really be preferred. Lakes range anywhere from, you know, $200,000 or $300,000 to the sky's the limit, like a Tempe Town Lake or Kewanis Lake down in, in Tempe. We've talked to several lake construction companies. Pacific Aquascape's a very popular one, a common one down in the valley. They've done a lot of golf course lakes and casino lakes in Las Vegas. They estimate our, our lake would be in the ballpark of $600,000. That would include either, either type of liner. We believe that it's part of our construction cost, because we're doing it as a nonprofit. We can get some of the dirt work donated. We've already talked to some local contractors who've agreed to do that. The liners, when it comes to preserving the water in a lake like this, really, there's two systems. In general, there's two systems that we're looking at. Either a membrane liner that's just a full, like a rubber liner at the bottom of the lake, or a chemical. There's two different chemicals we've considered, but the one we're looking at is ESS-13. It's a, it's a chemical that, the way I understand it, if you mix it with the, with the soil, it, it can provide retention as great as or better than a rubber liner. So, all that said and done, we've done our, we've done our homework about what the lake can be, what the, what the impact it can be, what it can have on the community, the costs involved. We've done quite a bit of fundraising over the years to get to this point. We don't believe our fundraising is done. We think that, that we can do better if we have the city as a partner in this. When we, when we knew we had a 10-acre lake, nine or 10-acre lake, and that was the direction we wanted to go, it just seemed to make more sense that if we included the, the city and, and offer part of it as soccer fields, that that might, that might even enhance the whole experience over there at Centennial Park. So, you know, we looked at that. We, we've considered evaporation, the evaporation rate for this area. We've done our research in that area. We know that water's going to be an issue. We know that is an issue. It's in the headline every single day. We, we've debated it among ourselves even, and, and it's a hard topic to tackle, but when we think about the, the amount of water that's being used in the northeast in the, the farmland areas up there, and you compare that to the benefit that this community is getting, it's really, it's really not that much water when you, when you look at it. I, it's, it's really, it's a difficult, it's a difficult topic. We're gonna have to talk it to death. We know that a lake of our size would use roughly 9.7 gallons per year. That's a little bit, just as comparison. I don't, and, and our group has never wanted to compete with the golf course crowd or the soccer crowd or anything. But in comparison, the way I read our water usage chart, the golf course as a whole uses a little more than, I think last year used a little more than 15 million gallons in a year. So we're, we're in the ballpark as far as usage and benefit. So those are, you know, tough decisions that, you know, we're gonna ask you to make, that we want to be part of that top, part of that discussion. I don't know. Is there anything else that you can think of that, do you have any questions for me or for our Game and Fish people or the Elks lives themselves? Because I've got representatives here. I know I stumbled through it. I'm a little nervous and I was, and I was really sick yesterday.
Thank you, Bill. Just to kind of summarize what you've heard tonight, is there's a 24-acre parcel of property that would make a great addition to Centennial Park, and everybody agrees on that. And there are two different ways to, to do that, both of which are reasonable, sensible alternatives. One has soccer fields for eight different sites, and the other one has soccer for four fields and a lake, both of which, both alternatives of which complement the library that's on the south end of the property. We have not budgeted money for this. For, I think, obvious reasons, first being an indication from the council about what your preferences are, and then, secondly, the questions that were raised after Mike's presentation about ownership of the property and how we go about it in terms of adopting whichever preference you have. So with that as context, questions for Bill and/or Mike?
Let me have it.
I have a question. If you could go back to, you said you had estimated, based on just constructing a lake, you estimated $3 million in annual revenues? What, what would that revenues?
There, and Matt can address that. That...
Okay. Thank you.
So, in its direct economic impact, so in 2015, Arizona Game and Fish conducts a survey to estimate the economic impacts of fishing. And according to that one, Fane Lake indirect expenditures, and we picked Fane Lake, you hear us talk about that a lot, because Prescott Valley is kind of one, a closer community to Kingman than a lot of the other ones that we're talking about. Fane Lake is probably about three acres, so it's smaller. And we estimated, according to that survey, $3.3 million in direct expenditures. They also do this multiplier effect. I don't usually like to look at that number, because I don't fully understand what that means, how, but I think it's that, you know, you spend money and then that contributes to another, but if you include that, then it's over $4 million. So, and that particular lake results in, they estimate 44 jobs. I don't know how they come up with this. It's a private company that does all the analysis, and we have it for all of the lakes in Arizona. Mojave County recognized the economic impacts of fishing, if you guys were aware, and I know Travis is aware of the, what happened when the trout stocking stopped and how much money's going in, into that now. So there are huge economic impacts, but there's also economic impacts to soccer. You know, you have one soccer tournament in Kingman, and that's a pretty big economic impact also. And so there's, there's good of both. We currently had a commitment from the county, and, and they are holding $100,000 for us, for Game and Fish, to put towards the construction and use and maintenance of the lake.
Of the 24 acre, of the 24 acres?
Thank you. Other questions?
I just want, thanks, Matt, and to all you guys for coming out and for all the work you've done so far. I think all those options, the city would obviously clearly benefit in so many different But as the manager said, right now, we haven't budgeted anything. So in order for the city to even consider it, just throwing it out there, would the half cent for capital improvements, would that be a potential funding source for that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And the other thing is, we were, I'm sorry if I, if I could say one more thing. As far as the lake goes, we weren't asking for any money for two years from the city. We were planning on building in the maintenance costs and that for the first two years.
But the construction of, if we went with a soccer fields complex as well, right? That would probably fall in the city?
Yes. Yep. Sorry, Travis. You're right.
Thank you. Other questions? Did you need direction from council or anything? Or this was just information only?
Not today. It's, it's information. And as, as Bill said, from the, from the perspective of the Elks, at, at some point, and they would prefer sooner to later, they'd like some statement of interest from the city about whether you're, which of those two alternatives you prefer? Would you like to do eight soccer fields and no lake? Or would you like to do four soccer fields and a lake? Because they can go forward.
We would, we would really like some direction in that area to know whether...
Doesn't have to be tonight.
No, because I certainly would like some more, more information. I'd like to see some more costs associated. I want to see some, some real data about projected revenues.
Okay. We will try to get that and be back on a work session.
And the water usage is, is something this council really needs to take into consideration if we could look at that as well.
Got it.
I'd just like to say that for whatever option we consider for our community, potential funding source is the half cent for capital improvement projects that we approved, and if that goes away, then a project that's wonderful like this, you know, we won't have a funding source for it. So just remember that.
Thank you very much for bringing that. Is there any other questions from the council?
I've got one.
Yes, go ahead.
Quick one. In order to help with the funding, is, are there, are there prospective sponsorship opportunities?
There are.
Has been considered?
The, that's how the accessible playground was committed to. They came to us and said, we're gonna, we'd like to build this on, as part of the project. There have been commitments for remadas and walking paths and things like that. Those have all been committed for.
Thank you so much. You understand, we've, we've got a lot of priorities, a lot of projects that we need to address in the city, and this is certainly something we'd, we'd like to explore, but we definitely need to look at some more data first.
You bet.
Would you like me to send you a copy of the entire economic impact report from our 20?
That would be most helpful.
Sure. Just send it to my attention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think...
Thank you.
Very much. Did you have another, did you have a question or comment?
Just one comment. I think at the forefront of everybody's mind is, is the water issue. I think it's, I mean, I can't speak for everyone, but I'd love to take my kids, you know, to a lake. But like, as has been mentioned, you know, the, there is a, a water issue, but I believe, you know, we can get creative in that area. I know, I know that in some of the discussions we've had, and I'm sure we'll have, we'll have more discussions about this, but, you know, the effluent water that comes from the, the water treatment plant is one option, and, and, you know, I'm sure we'll get, we'll get creative in that arena, but, you know, obviously, that's something that we'd like to see in, in future discussions as well. You know, maybe creative ways to avoid any issues in that regard.
Well, Mr. Wade, we totally agree. We investigated that briefly early on, but then got sticker shock at the cost for the infrastructure to get it here. Of course, you all know that. But we looked at that from, if, if we were able to tag a bunch of these very impactful projects all along the Mojave Wash, there's a lot of partnerships that could be developed to get that effluent all the way to the golf course. So there's a lot of, you're right, but it all takes money. Thank you.
If I may, Mayor and council? I'm from the Elks, of course, Jerry Grimes. The Arizona Major Projects is, their funding sources are for the communities, for betterment for children, for veterans, and primarily to betterment of the community. Their board of directors came up to Kingman, drove on the I-40 and seen the empty property and said, what an opportunity. And that is when we met, and I met with them, and they committed the $300,000. Last week, they called me and they asked me how it was going, and, and I told them, I said, well, it's a slow process. We have put, you know, get the horses in front of the cart first before we get too carried away, because we're very excited about the progress and, and the opportunity for the city. When I talked to him last week, he told me, well, just between you and I, we're gonna budget another $50,000 in that escrow account for you for anticipation of paying for the first year's operational cost. So with that in mind, it is, we're very excited, the Elks of Arizona are excited about this opportunity to spread the wealth, so to speak, because that's what we do. And we wanted you to know, and they wanted you to know, that they're behind us 100%. And there's a possibility even more funding, but with that $50,000, true, it's not a million dollars, but they're looking forward to the opportunity for the city to join us in this venture, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Moving on to item four in the work session, curbside recycling pilot program update.
Thanks, guys.
Rob Owen is here to update the council and the community on our pilot recycling program, and he's got some information on how it's being used and some important information about the markets. Rob?
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. I apologize, I'm suffering with Kingman allergies a little bit, so I hope you can empathize. But I'd like to talk about our curbside recycling pilot program. We began this in November. Tonight, we'd like to share the results and present our staff recommendations moving forward. Again, we began in November. It was 550 homes. That's about 5% of the total residential customers that we have. It was located in Wallack Ranch and Legacy Neighborhoods. We did try to utilize some of the best management practices for recycling program. We used the single stream collection that doesn't require sorting by the customer, but it does by the collection agency. And we did utilize 90-gallon cans. Well, we tried to repurpose some of our green cans with blue lids. This is a map showing the area. Again, you can see it's a small portion of the city. This has been updated since What's in Your Handout. This includes numbers for March. Generally, over the period, we had a rough November when we started. There were two holidays in that month that did affect pickups and participation. But overall, we averaged about 44% participation, a little bit less than 20% contamination within the, what we picked up. And we figure, based upon previous tonnage totals of solid waste collected in those neighborhoods, we diverted a little bit less than 20% from the landfill. Program cost initially... Program cost initially, we budgeted forty thousand dollars for the cans. We used existing personnel. That was one driver. We diverted some inmate labor for some other chores at Public Works, and they spend a day and a half sorting each week. Our evaluation criteria or participation contamination diversion, those were all steady after the initial slow month to start. Costs for collection and sorting, those were steady. Our biggest obstacle was cost of disposal and the market volatility. And we'll talk a little bit more of that going forward. What we found is that, you know, we probably couldn't have timed this worse if we would have tried. Right before we started, Chinese had introduced some import restrictions, some highly unrealistic contamination standards, and it has affected cities throughout the West Coast primarily. East Coast utilizes India and some Bangladesh and some other destinations for recycled material, but pretty much all of the Western United States utilizes Chinese market. We really had no local material recovery facility to utilize. Waste management had the same issues we did, and was not interested in our materials. Bulldog disposal, the local vendor that we utilized previously, is pretty much down, down to just taking mixed paper. At one time last year, we were receiving sixty dollars a ton reimbursement for mixed paper, and now we're paying forty-five dollars a ton to drop it off. Right now, we're using trucks and personnel to transport to Las Vegas, and we are transporting glass, electronic waste, and plastic. So, our trip to Las Vegas, about two hundred and twenty-eight miles round trip. We're doing that twice a week for plastics. E-waste and glass are transported as needed. So, using, utilizing FEMA rates, cost per trip is about five hundred and eighty-one dollars. Tipping fee for plastics has varied substantially since we've been operating anywhere from twenty-five to fifty dollars per ton. Tipping, tipping fee for e-waste averages about two cents per pound. Again, that depends on, there's variability in there depending on the amount of computer monitors versus towers or other more, more valuable e-waste. And reimbursement for glass is about twenty to thirty dollars per ton, which covers about half the cost of the trip up to Las Vegas. Just by comparison, this is survey landfill. This is our, where we dispose of our solid waste. It's a thirty mile round trip for us, about an hour and a half, and costs about a hundred and thirty-five dollars per trip. And we're paying thirty-five dollars a ton to dispose of our solid waste there. We're not transporting recyclables to landfill, other than the stuff that's been substantially contaminated, and we can't mix it or can't sort it and clean it. We have maintained the easy recycling drop program. We haven't noticed any significant, significant drop-off with the addition of the pilot curbside program. And we've averaged, you can see, we've averaged around a thousand tons per year with that program. And again, that program is utilized by both city residents and county residents. This map shows those locations. If you can see the little green dots. So, staff recommendations are to conclude, conclude the pilot program. May first, send out mailers, container pickup to be conducted in May, and to revisit again later. There's been some staff discussion about a rate study for sanitation next year. And if that were to proceed, I think that recycling could be an element included in that rate study. As it is with the volatility of the market, not knowing what we're paying from week to week, I, I don't have information to prepare a budget for a sanitation department that would include the curbside recycling program for next year. You can try to answer any questions. There will be an action item on tonight's agenda later on.
Thank you. Questions of staff?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Mayor Gates, members of council, the, the summary of what Rob just said is, good participation in, in the program, no market, thanks to foreign interests who have decided not to purchase that material. And so, it just makes it difficult to continue. And that's the basis for the recommendation to discontinue. We're obviously open to reconsidering the, the curbside recycling when that market recovers.
Any questions of staff? We'll revisit this when we see the change in the market, correct?
Well, that's, 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 yes. But the, the first half is the, the recommendation to discontinue the program effective May first. And so, we wanted to make sure that you heard both of those messages.
Thank you. Any questions, anyone?
I do have a few questions. I think, I mean, I have several questions, but I think my most important question, and I'll, I guess I'll give a background to this. I, I know that recently, you know, the city council has made a, a push. We've made a more concerted effort to get our commissions involved in decisions that, you know, they would normally be involved in. We've, we've done our best to help empower these commissions to help us with these decisions. Has this presentation been made to the Clean City Commission?
We've provided updates to the program as we've gone through to the Clean City Commission. Our intention was to provide this presentation to the next, at the next meeting of the Clean City Commission.
Okay. And so, we, we've been providing updates with them, but we haven't received, you know, a recommendation from them or anything to that effect?
No, sir.
Okay. And I, and I, personally, I, you know, I think that's something that we need to do before we make decisions on this. You know, obviously, the Clean City Commission, one of their objectives is to, you know, help us with these decisions and, and to kind of flesh these things out in their meetings and, you know, discuss them at length. So, I, I would like to see this presentation made to the Clean City Commission. I do have some questions that perhaps they might be able to help answer, or, or maybe staff would know. But one of the things I wanted to kind of flesh out is, I know that Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City, they have successful recycling programs. And, I'm sorry, am I not loud enough? I, I will be closer. They have, Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City have recycling programs, and I'm just wondering how they're able to make it work. Another question I had that maybe fleshed out better by the, the Clean City Commission is, I'd like to see a cost comparison between the costs that we've paid for the drop bins versus the, the, the current program that we're doing, and also a comparison between the, the bins, the, the program, and an expanded citywide program. That's one of the...
Councilmember Waite, Mayor Gates, members of council, I actually have two comments. The first is, city of Kingman has a successful recycling program. It's called the Easy Drop. You know, and you just saw in Rob's presentation, the fact that that program has shown a steady increase. So, we, I would put us in the list of cities with successful programs. The, the difference is that when the recycling effort extends into residential neighborhoods, the volume goes up, and we don't have a, the only way we have presently to deal with that is to truck that material to Las Vegas. And, and it, Rob's presentation talked about the results. So, we're here basically making a recommendation based on an economic proposition. Number two, which is a really interesting process question, is that we chose to bring this to your attention first because it was a pilot project. If it were programmatic, like, let's say, Easy Drop, we were looking at how that was going, then I would have encouraged Rob and his staff to go to the commission first and, and talk about ideas. But this was, in my understanding, I could be wrong, I wasn't here when it started, but my understanding was intended to be, if you will, a demonstration project or a pilot project, that the council was interested in seeing how that worked. And so, we thought it was appropriate to start with the commission. If you're interested, or I'm sorry, with the council, if you're interested as a council in looping in the commission, which I would, I get, right, then that would extend the date from May first to some other date. And might cause you not to want to act on a motion. It's on the business meeting agenda as well. But I just wanted the council to know that the decision to bring it here first was intentional based on how we understood the program, I understood the program to have started.
And going, going back to those points, I know that, you know, in light of the fact that China is imposing sanctions or is not accepting this, I, I imagine that Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City are also affected by the same, the same ban. So, I imagine that they are also trucking their recycling to Las Vegas. So, and they have curbside recycling as well. Considering the fact that we have no intention, at least at this time, to get rid of the drop recycling bins.
Correct.
I think it's important to kind of compare and contrast the difference in cost between what we, what we were paying with the recycling drop bins, or what we would be paying now at the current rates of the drop bins, and compare it with the additional cost of the curbside recycling, and see, you know, what the difference is. If it's, you know, obviously, if it's enormous, then that's something that, i- it would make a difference in my decision if it was an enormous change, if the cost was, you know, really high as compared to if it's, you know, kind of miniscule. So, that's kind of what I'm looking for as well. And, and maybe the, if we were to present this be- before the Clean City Commission, we can come to them with those numbers in hand, and they can help us out with that too.
If I'm, if I could add to that. I'm sure it's not any surprise that I'm not ready to give up on the curbside recycling program at this point. I agree with David Waite. I'd like to see the Clean City Commission take a look and see if they can't flesh out another answer. In looking at this presentation, all the data is on the entire program, and so it is hard to make a decision when we can't see exactly what curbside does versus what the bins do. And if we're not getting rid of the entire program, we're still dealing with all these recyclables. We're still, e-waste and glass don't come from curbside. They come from the bins. And so, it really needs to be broken down so we can look at the two. I think that saying we have a successful program is really based on what we all view as a successful program. To me, it's curbside pickup because that is encouraging a, a reduced waste in every home. It's encouraging everybody to recycle versus just throwing things away. You know, when we talk about ending the curbside, we're still gonna go back to picking up trash at that same home. So, there's still costs of somebody going out and picking up and, and all these kinds of things. So, I'd really like to see a little bit more of an apples-to-apples approach in the numbers. I'd like to see if we can't look for a better solution to curbside so that we can continue to expand it. Because the concern is, is that we drop it, when do we ever bring it back? How do we ever have the confidence to bring it back? It'll just be, remember that one time we tried it, it didn't work. Why would we do it again? Let's see if we can't look for other solutions before we just get rid of it. That, those are my two cents.
Excuse me. Would you, would you address why Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City have a different approach? They don't handle their own...
Yes, ma'am. Republic Services serves both Bullhead City and Lake Havasu. And Republic Services is where we haul our materials up in Las Vegas. And I would be, I would say that it's a safe bet that since it's Republic Services, they're not paying the same tipping fee that we are up in Las Vegas.
Thank you. I think that's important to, 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 to explain that so you understand that there is a difference there. But...
Is that, is that a private company that picks up all their trash? I don't know what Republic Services is.
Yes, it, it's, it's a large waste management firm.
So, city doesn't pick up trash in Bullhead and Lake Havasu?
No, ma'am.
Okay. So, they privatize that, and that includes their recycling program?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This will be on your business meeting.
Absolutely, later in the...
Later tonight, correct.
This evening. And so, finally, the last item on this is the...
Well, we're gonna try.
Annexation?
I have no idea where I am on this.
I didn't know.
You didn't, huh?
I did. I also was attached to that.
That's why I couldn't...
Maybe.
Maybe. This is the, this is a presentation that was meant not to be presented. So, what I'm gonna wind up doing tonight is, is use one example of some annexation initiatives staff is pursuing. Look at what you found. So, we're looking at the area around Kingman High School, and then the area around the airport to, together, that's over forty-two hundred acres. The annexation process in Arizona has to strictly follow Arizona statutes, and those are identified on this slide. And it's about, minimum times, about four months from the beginning of the process. The city of Kingman has grown over the years through annexation, but the last time that we did an annexation was in 2010. People annex, cities annex partly because of their growth strategy, partly because of their economic development strategy, or simply because they include important community assets like airports, open space, parks, and the like. So, the Kingman High School property is the, property, the larger the two marked in green, it says K-U-S-D. And then they have another property just to the south of it. For those of you who aren't familiar with the area, the South Street is Gordon. The one to the left is Bank. And the, the school district and the city staff have met to discuss the possibility of having the high school, Kingman High School, actually within the city limits of Kingman. And they think that's a good idea, as does the city staff. And so, that's the basis upon which we're going forward. The ironic part about this whole area is it's all publicly held. And so, it's a lot of property, period. But then we realize that the answer to the question, what happens on property taxes is nothing. What happens, right, down the road? And, and so, the advantage is to, to the schools are that have the services that the Kingman Police and Fire Department... that the Kingman Police and Fire Departments, uh, there, and then they receive, uh, their utilities at regular rates rather than the premium. And, uh, so it has the makings of a really good partnership, uh, between the city and the school district, and so we have not only been in contact with the schools, uh, but also with the state of Arizona about, uh, adding their property. One of the things that, uh, staff does when they're pursuing annexations is that they look at the area adjacent to the focal point, so you've got the high school here, but the west side of Bank Street, I, I just showed you this on a four-hundred-foot depth from the curb, uh, the West Bank curb on, on, uh, Bank Street. And so you, you explore whether those property owners would be interested as well in, in joining the city, uh, with, uh, through an annexation process. And that's, that's the preliminary work. You're, you're trying to decide what the area to be annexed looks like. And then, once there's an informal agreement, then the formal goes through, and that's why the, the minimum I said is like four months, that's after there's an agreement on, on what the boundaries are. We haven't gotten that far yet, we've been concentrating on the, the school district and the state, uh, with this particular annexation. The, um, the analysis on this site's actually pretty straightforward because of the tax situation and the, uh, public ownership, as I explained. We're looking at the same exact process at the airport, only it's much more complicated. And the reason it's more complicated is some of that property is owned by the city, some of that property is owned by private interests who are paying property taxes on it. And city staff's, uh, determination so far is that at the airport, uh, property, if you will, about two and a half million dollars a year is paid in property taxes, of which, excuse me, of which almost six hundred thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight thousand change, uh, goes to the fire district. And so, um, there are all sorts of things to, uh, consider with, uh, an annexation of the airport, uh, but the same principle that I just showed on this Kingman High School annexation also applies to the airport, which you look, you can, and I would encourage, uh, the staff after I leave to continue to look at the airport, not just for the airport per se, but for adjacent property owners who would be willing to, to be a part of that annexation. So that annexation could actually be much larger than about the thirty-five, thirty-six hundred acres that I included. I apologize for the brevity of, of the presentation, um, but I wanted the council to know that, uh, city staff is engaged on these two areas, uh, for annexation. One, essentially at Kingman High School, uh, as I said to the staff when they said, uh, when they were discussing this with me, it just seems to me that Kingman High School should be in Kingman, Arizona. Uh, and so that's, uh, that's the vision, if you will, for this one. And for the airport, it seems to me that if the city is, uh, successful in having the airport as a part of it, uh, its governance, that, uh, it would make sense that you seriously consider, uh, bringing the airport in. And with that, I say thank you, uh, for your patience, and it was a stem-winding presentation if, uh, i- if you went through the whole thing calmly and quietly, but hopefully you have a, a basic idea of what we're trying to accomplish on this front. Questions from mayor and council?
No, thank, thank you very much, I want, I want to thank you for pursuing this. You had a question, council member?
A quick comment, yeah, and I'll make it brief because I know we're here for other thing, a lot of people are here for other things, but one of the things I'd like to, uh, at least the city to consider when fleshing this idea out more is what effect would annexing these areas have on law enforcement, including response times, resources, costs, et cetera? And also, um, you know, at the next presentation, whenever we discuss this again, what financial benefit annexing that particular area would have for Kingman? So, that's all, that's all I had to.
Okay. Uh, two quick things. First, we're required to answer those questions as part of the annexation process. Uh, council member Wade. And secondly, um, it takes longer to explain than I have, but there, there's a way to, uh, in the Kingman High School annexation to, uh, have this become beneficial for both parties in terms of law enforcement, and I'd be glad to explain that to you offline.
Okay.
Other questions?
Just one, uh, when will this issue be back in front of the council? Do you have any idea?
I would, I would actually hope, uh, sometime early summer, uh, council member Lingenfelter, that the, uh, the Kingman High School one, we were in communication with the state, and so I want to have, uh, a more definitive response from the state before we come back on that one. And then I, absolutely whoever's standing at this microphone needs more time to lay out the, the opportunities at the airport.
That answer your question?
This is a very fast one, a yes or no. Is the fire department and police department both supportive of the annexation for both areas?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So I will entertain a motion to adjourn the work session at seven oh six.
So moved.
Second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
We'll call the regular meeting of the common council to order. It's seven oh six, we've already had roll call. Please join me in standing for the invocation. The invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Griff Odier of the Kingman Presbyterian Church, then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Yara, council? Let us pray. Sovereign Lord God, you know there is an ancient Hebrew proverb that declares the truth, where there are two rabbis or teachers, there are three opinions. There are the human viewpoints of mortals, and then there is the divine perspective of God Almighty. We desire that you, Lord, and your presence and your discernment would be here at tonight's civic concerns as things go on and are discussed and deliberated. For the sake of our future, our prosperity, and well-being, we ask that you grant guidance and your blessing as these subjects, uh, such as city tax revenues and water control and property annexation are discussed and deliberated. We do need that third opinion so very much. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Oh, thank you. First item of business tonight is the approval of minutes. I was unable to access those, didn't, and. No problem, so we can, okay, so we can expect to see that on the next agenda? Thank you very much. So item number two, always something I enjoy, Jay, awards and recognition, employee service recognition. I have some certificates to present. Well, that's a good question.
Randy Duesen, twenty years of service?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item two B, we have a proclamation this evening. It is National Public Safety Telecommunications, Telecommunicators Week, I beg your pardon. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Kingman nine-one-one Police-Fire Communications Center, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the Kingman nine-one-one Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Kingman declares the week of April 8th through the 14th, 2018, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Kingman, Arizona, in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Is there anyone here to accept this certificate this evening? Moving on to call to the public, comments from the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be limited, will be, pardon me, will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of those on the consent agenda. There will be no comments allowed that advertise for a particular person or group. Comment should be limited to no longer than three minutes. First person I have signed up to speak is Amanda Crow- Croger, Kroger?
Thank you. Hi, I'm here to, um, ask your guys' approval or blessing to continue on with the Centennial Park Edition. I'm speaking on behalf of Kingman Youth Soccer League. Currently, we register over seven hundred kids a year to play just on the city league for about twelve weeks. We, um, utilize the softball fields, at least four of them every weekend, plus the other recreational fields as well, and we are in strong need of additional support. If you think about seven hundred kids, that's ten kids per team, that's a lot of different practice fields that we're in need of desperately. Um, also, we have a new, um, program that we rolled out this year. The PDP was just like a development program, and we had fifty participants last year, this year we have a hundred fifty. One year we've already tripled that number, and that would be what we need footsball courts for, like the indoor soccer courts as well. Um, with our growth, it makes us one of the largest soccer communities in northern Arizona. With these additional fields, it would enable us to host soccer tournaments. We've already been addressed by the, um, Arizona Soccer League to host, um, regional soccer tournaments because they hear that we're getting lights and we're growing, but our fields just aren't in the right condition yet, and we have to turn them away and lose some income that way. Um, because we're centrally located, it's a great spot for people from Nevada or Phoenix or big cities to come to Kingman, bringing in revenue for hotels, restaurants, anything. Also, um, we want to be able to host tournaments, which, um, currently in Havasu, they're having a tournament this weekend, Bullhead is having a tournament next weekend, they're hosting eighty teams, eighty teams. That's, how many hundred families is that? If you have ten kids per team, a minimum, you know, that's a huge revenue that we could be benefiting from in Kingman if we had soccer fields. Um, Lake Havasu, they just invested three million dollars on four fields, and we need four, we need six, we need eight, we need as many as we can get because it is a huge growth for Kingman. Um, also, there's a need for possible adult soccer tournaments, too, because they're growing and they're looking for venues to play on as well, and we need bigger fields, we can't just practice on softball fields every week. Um, oh, as you know, Kingman has already helped, our soccer league has already helped donate for the lights, we've donated, we've gotten in-kind donations, we're willing to help to get more donations, to do whatever we need, because this is really important to our kids, our community, our league, everything. So I think that's all I can remember, I'm nervous, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Kroger. Randy Perry?
Uh, members, mayor and members of council, thank you for hearing me. I'm here again about the Airport Authority. The idea is raised up there is they're gonna raise up another two-hundred-and-fifty million, or two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to do their, uh, fight against you. You guys are putting more money into it to fight against them. It's a nasty divorce, only one that's getting rich is the lawyers in Phoenix. Okay, you're using money that you don't have. Put it towards the soccer fields, don't put it towards this, and I think you ought to be able to get an injunction against the Airport Authority from using their funds, because those funds are only supposed to be used for the airport, not for other things. The funds that they raised there at the airport is supposed to be used at the airport. Okay? You guys either need to get in a room and get together and work it out, five of you just get into a room with five of them and don't come out until there's an agreement. get into a room with five of them, and don't come out until there's an agreement. But going to court, all this, you guys ain't even made it to court yet, and you're both at about $400,000. It's ridiculous. They're talking about this thing going all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States. What's that, $2 million each? You're using money that ain't yours. You want to fight it, use your own money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Herberta Schroeder Baker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, I'm Herberta Schroeder Baker, and I live here in the city of Kingman. I wanted to address problems with annexation, you're talking about the Fire Department and Police Department on board. We have a great Police Department and a great Fire Department, and if you ask them to jump, they say, "How high?" So, what do you think their answer's going to be? They'll, they will do what they can for the citizens of Kingman until they break. That's not what I call public service on the part of the city. The city has a responsibility to public service, not only to its citizens, but also to the men and women providing that service. So, don't stretch them till they break. If we do annexation, you do have to look at the fact that the closest Fire Department is on Gordon and Stockton Hill Road, or one block off of Stockton Hill Road. The closest Police Department or substation is where? So, these are things you will have to consider before you can think about annexing. And then, of course, there's always the fight that you have with people surrounding those areas that don't want to have city anywhere near them. Gee, I can't imagine why. So, please keep that in mind when you're talking about annexation, because it is going to incur multimillion dollar costs to be able to provide, be able to provide emergency services. Now, the airport has its own Fire Department built in, in the Airport Authority Building, it was designed as a firehouse, and it has all the equipment, it just won't have the staff. There again, you're going to have to staff it. Don't spread your people so thin they break. I haven't talked with anybody in the department, I don't know what their feelings are, what their staffing needs are, but I know when you keep adding on realms of responsibility without adding on firehouses and police substations, and officers, and firemen and paramedics, you're going to end up with a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak. A call to the public, does anyone wish to address the council at this time? Kindly state your name for the record.
Mayor and Council, my name's Harley Pettit, resident of Kingman. I'm going to ask that, because these work sessions are in front of the council meeting, that you move them to alternate Tuesdays, like the second and fourth Tuesday. It just makes the meetings, in this case, another hour and a half longer, and we all need our rest.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Go ahead and close call to the public.
Madam Mayor, I think there's one of them.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Yeah, just make, would you kindly make sure you give your contact information to the city clerk?
Sure, I did.
Oh, great, thank you.
At the beginning. Hi, I'm Marian, Mayor and Council, I can't see you real clearly, but now I can read my papers. Mayor and Council, I do appreciate the opportunity to speak. Marian Van Hasselt, resident of Kingman, I want to state that I am for growth and progress. I am for Kingman Crossing and Rattlesnake Wash and all development in Kingman for the benefit of all involved, for health, wealth, and happiness for all. I was present at the largest Kingman City Council meeting, where the residents stood in support of Kingman moving forward and Kingman Crossing. And I heard Mayor Gates that you said that you felt that the city shouldn't be in the position of being a developer, that we needed to rush to get rid of it, and that, that I heard you say, that that's what you felt the people were saying. However, I heard that the people were speaking up, saying that they wish the city to quit dragging its feet and move forward in progress. I do appreciate we are, that is happening. And for the people in power to quit blocking progress to suit their own needs. I applaud that the city and KRM C are willing to work together to come out with differing deals that then address the finances better. However, I do see that the city is in the business of being a developer. We're responsible for development and growing the city effectively, as evidenced by hiring an Economic Development Director, Gary Kellogg. We have a Planning and Zoning Commission that says where development will happen. We are putting together a new commission for economic development, and we're moving forward with developing the airport and resolving that situation. When, even with all the openness that's happening, it feels that this process with KRM C is potentially following the habits of the past, where it seems like an insider deal, even though it's in front of everybody. And to, I would suggest that to prevent an insider deal happening, the city should market this land, seek a developer for the project in addition to KRM C. KRM C is coming forward with wonderful solutions, and I'm glad the city is willing to work together with them. Other people might have some great solutions also. This is a city asset that belongs to all, not just the council. It needs to be developed, marketed, and sold to the highest benefit of all residents for now and the future, and I ask that you move forward in the discussion with KRM C and other developers, and that this should be a ballot issue, not just the decision of the council, because it's all of our asset. And I appreciate that you are moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Okay, we'll go ahead and close comments from the public, and move on to the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does anyone on the council wish to have any item pulled for discussion? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item 5A, old, under old business, curbside recycling pilot program. The sanitation division implemented a pilot curbside recycling program in November of 2017. Staff recommends that the City Council adopt a motion ending the curbside recycling pilot program effective May 1st, 2018.
Mayor and Council, again, going back to our presentation during the work session, we've run this program for five months. It has been successful as far as participation and contamination. I guess our issue is that we don't have a readily available or known market to dispose of our recyclable, our recoverable materials, and that without knowing that, moving into a citywide program, we don't have the information to prepare a budget for council consideration for that. So, staff recommendation would be to end the pilot program, and the staff will continue, continue the easy drop program. We have incorporated, been able to incorporate that into our, into our operation over the years, but with the volume of going citywide, we would not be able to afford to do that. So, I can try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, we do have two people signed up to speak on this. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
I have a question. If the people who are currently using the curbside recycling decide that they really like this, and they're going to put their, they're going to drop it in their, in the drop containers, wouldn't the volume just increase, and wouldn't we need to pick up more and take the, I don't know if it'd be the same volume, it would probably be diminished, but has that been factored in?
I think our concern with, would be going citywide. You know, it's causing a strain on the department with the curbside pickup and the number of trips we have to take to Las Vegas. It's a strain staffing wise and the equipment wise. But the major concern would be to move into a citywide program without having, going through a whole rate study, going through and identifying all of our costs, and identifying those as best we could to put forward a budget for council consideration.
Other questions of staff?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry, can I go real quick? Councilor? So, would a compromise possibly be to just keep curbside in the two neighborhoods it's in for now, and then wait it out six months or a year, or whatever, until maybe the market changes? That way, we're not taking a step backwards and quitting, but we're not expanding it either?
So, I will, Mayor Gates, Members of Council, Councilmember Staley, I, I looked at this as a pilot project, and the idea was to decide, based on the pilot project, whether or not we wanted to expand it or end it. And so, what you're suggesting is that, that we continue the pilot, I'm not sure on the, you know, how long does that last part, but it, I'm not sure, I appreciate how the council would get to a decision point about whether to end it or expand it citywide, if we did, if we did what you suggested. Does that make, am I making any sense on that?
Right. Yeah. Wouldn't, wouldn't it be that as things change, or new solutions come about, then we would go back and say, okay, we have a, we have an answer, or somebody's, somebody's taking these now, or, you know, I mean, there's, there's going to be a change. Obviously, you have all these cities taking in recyclables, somebody's going to find a solution to make it work and make it profitable, especially now, now that we hear that, you know, it's privatized in Bullhead and Havasu, and, and if it's privatized, that means somebody's making money somewhere, so couldn't we just hold out a little bit longer, keep things just as they are, and see if it doesn't improve in a year, or six months, or?
Well, I think one of the issues is that it's going to take major private investment to upgrade these material recovery facilities to be able to meet the Chinese standards in place now. And this is not just something that's affecting us, I mean, the city of Portland is hauling recyclables to the landfill. I think there are a lot of private companies that are doing the same, but not publicizing that fact. You know, if we're going to have a recycling program, I'd like to make sure that it's one that's actually recycling and not just in name.
I agree.
So, I think it's going to take some substantial investment into these MRFs in order to meet these new standards, or these new standards to change. I think that may take a while.
I want to try answering Councilmember Staley again, because I don't think I did a really good job the first time. I, I've just been doing this long enough that this is the fifth or sixth market collapse that I've lived through. I mean, it just, it's what the business is about. And in the work session presentation, staff said that when the market came back, we'd be back. But what we'd be back with is a recommendation to take this program citywide, not limited to two target, or pilot areas. And what Rob has been suggesting is that a part of the operational concerns for him is that we're trying to do this as a pilot project for an extended period of time. So, you know, is, six months seem like a reasonable time to us, that's why we're here. You know, if the council thinks nine months is better than six months, you know, to see, I mean, we're not going to sit here and say, no, we can't do that, but again, the name of the program is pilot, which suggests we're trying to find out whether or not this makes sense for our sanitation effort to extend, in my view, to extend it beyond those two neighborhoods. And so, that's my perspective, and in June, there'll be somebody else sitting here with a different perspective probably, but I just, I think the, I think the focus needs to be on, how long do you want to have this pilot program operate before you have sufficient data? I heard the concerns about data, and staff will try to address those, so that the data makes more sense. But I would really discourage the council from getting themselves into an open-ended pilot project that goes for, I don't know, however long that is. But if you want to, if you want to see what another three months does, if you want to, you know, you pick a number to me as a, as a council, and staff is, I think, willing to, to extend the program if that's your pleasure. We think, and that's what we said in work session, we think that there's enough information available, we didn't necessarily present it well, or you wouldn't have the questions, but we think there's enough information available now to say, the next time we come to you on this topic, it ought to be when the market's recovered, and we're able to realistically talk about extending this service citywide.
Thank you, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'd like to address a question to Manager Bacon. I heard previously during the work session that both Havasu and Bullhead had privatized this. What factors did they look at at privatizing their program? And is it, it's both residential trash service and, and recycling? Did they go out through RFP?
Rob might know that, I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I believe several years ago, they went out to an RFP, and I think it started out with the basic sanitation service. I think subsequently, recycling pickup was offered as an option. I think, I believe it's optional in both communities, I'm not positive, but it was offered as something that people could pay into if they wanted to. But I don't know exactly when that happened.
So, would the city of Kingman be prohibited from keeping in-house the residential trash service, and then putting out an RFP or something for a privatized recycling program?
I don't know that a private hauler would be interested in coming in just for the recycling. I think if they were interested, it would be probably for the whole sanitation piece.
I think we've had this discussion before. This is, did you have a comment?
I have a question. We spent $40,000 on recycle bins. We've got one person dedicated to it, and that's a driver, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
How much, does it, do you know how much it costs us to truck all the stuff over to Las Vegas?
Yes, ma'am, that was, I believe it was 500 and... Yeah, the FEMA rates for labor and equipment for a trip to Las Vegas is $581.
Per trip?
Yes, ma'am.
And is it a weekly trip, or biweekly?
Right now, we're doing two trips a week for plastics, and then electronic waste and glass recycling are kind of on an as-needed basis when the containers are full.
So, it's a minimum of two trips a week at 580 some dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And just a, a follow-up question. I apologize, I just wanted to kind of jump along those same lines. $581 to, for the truckloads that we send to Las Vegas, is there a distinction between the added amount that we now have with the pilot program, and can we compare that with the drop bins themselves? Or are we just dump, or are we just putting them all in the same truck and sending them over?
We are, we are mixing them when we pick them up, so, because it is a mix, yes.
One of the, one of the problems I have, or one of the reasons I feel uncomfortable ending the program is because I don't know exactly what the cost, cost difference is between the drop bins by themselves and the added cost of the, the curbside recycling. I mean, if it's miniscule, it wouldn't bother me to, you know, spend a little bit more to do the right thing, which is, you know, recycling, as opposed to spending, you know, an exorbitant amount, you know, that would make a difference in, I think, the decision that we have to make. And also, I also don't feel comfortable ending the program without getting a recommendation from the Clean City Commission. That's just a thought.
Other questions?
I guess just to clarify, part of our issue with the cost is that it is variable. We don't know from week to week what we'll be paying to dispose of, of some of these commodities.
Question?
Yeah, just to follow up on your statement that we've had this conversation before, who's had that conversation before?
The city, this has been something that's been discussed for, for years, I know this is something we've...
I've never seen it, can I get the backup or something?
We're going back a long time, this is something probably... This is something probably, I clearly remember, Rieda Valley area was polled many, many years ago, so that's why I was familiar with Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City. It certainly, it's something that we're all interested in pursuing, but I think that there's, I think we've now have a couple of questions. I think we started out as either ending it or expanding it, and now we're looking at either, you know, not ending it and just maybe-
Let me, let me offer this suggestion to the, to the mayor and council. Heard multiple times tonight from Councilmember Wade, with some non-verbal assent from others around the day, is that the next logical step for this recommendation should be to visit the commission. So, if, if that's the will of the council, then the suggestion would be that's where it goes next. If a majority of you'd rather keep the conversation at the council level, you know, then we're more than happy to do that and schedule this for study session and probably not act on this motion tonight. But it seems to me that Councilmember Wade actually raised a, a basic process point about how we proceed with this topic. And so, to me, the, the suggestion would be, is the majority of the council supportive of what Councilmember Wade suggested, which is to refer it to the commission? And then they'll be back, along with staff, to have that, that conversation in a work session when they're done.
Fine with that.
I see, I see heads nodding, that that's, okay. So, then, that being the case, I can withdraw this item, if that's your pleasure, rather than to take a vote on it.
Okay, so this item is withdrawn, there's, we don't need to, we have two people sign up to speak on this, but-
I haven't had this conversation with the city clerk about what her preference is in terms of a motion to, or withdrawal.
I would probably say a motion to table would be more appropriate, since there's already been discussion, and that way, the council can still hear the two people that are signed up.
So, the, the motion is, that's before you, the suggestion of the clerk, is a motion to table pending feedback from the commission.
Mr. Bacon, we have two people sign up to speak on this item, can, I wanna go ahead and hear from them first before we entertain a motion?
That's fine, but I just make sure we're clear on the-
Absolutely, we're clear on that. Sarah Ferry?
Hi, y'all, thanks for having me. Sarah Ferry, Kingman, Arizona. I am on the Clean City Commission, but I was just coming to speak as a citizen. I just wanted to say that I was one of the citizens that came to the Clean City Commission. There was a whole room full of people that really wanted to go forward with this curbside recycling, and I just really appreciate the effort in doing this, where for years, we just heard no, without really any re, you know, any data. And I just wanna say that this wasn't really in vain, because now we have this data, and we show that if this were implemented, then, then people will participate, and, you know, that really gave me a whole lot of hope. I guess it's a little different now that it's coming, possibly coming back to the commission, but what I wanted to say was just that, you know, even right now, if, if the time isn't, isn't right now, I guess I'm just asking that we keep an open mind and continue to look for solutions, and that this is, this is the right thing to do. And I think that really what's going on with China is that they're asking for a cleaner, better product, and so everybody's having to reevaluate the way that they do recycling. So, you know, I guess that's all I'm saying, is just that if, if we, if we put it on the back burner, let's just, let's just keep it open, you know, for suggestions and keep looking for solutions, so, thanks.
Thank you very much. Joe Fellers?
Hello. Members of the council, Mayor. Joe Fellers, 1962 Clint Eastwood Way, which is in Wallup Ranch. I've been a fan of the pilot program since the beginning. Actually, Councilmember Wade and Staley already addressed 95% of what I was going to say. I felt like the data wasn't, the data is there, I just don't feel like it's clear enough for me, 'cause I, as my friends can tell you, I am not exactly a math person or a tables person or an Excel spreadsheet person. But I also was going to suggest potentially, instead of maybe pivoting from a pilot program to a neighborhood-by-neighborhood implementation as we get more data, but keeping the, keeping the pilot program active for a specific extended period of time, three months, six months, whatever it may be. So, so hopefully, we can get more data. And I did a little bit of preliminary research on this. China's not going to be changing what they want. For 30 years, China has, was kind of a dumping ground for a lot of things that we wanna throw away, and they would buy it and process it very dearly, and they, but now they're really pivoting, 'cause they're realizing that people are dying of all sorts of different things. Their cancer rates are through the roof, and they realize that it's because they accepted a lot of really nasty, mostly, I should say, e-waste. Look into it, there's lots of documentaries about it, it's really terrible. But China's not gonna be going back on that, but we're also not gonna be eliminating recycling in the future. I have a feeling that very quickly, especially in incredibly green cities like Portland, they're not gonna stop recycling for any length of time. So, I think maybe by the end of the year, we might be able to have some sort of solution, so I implore you to please extend the pilot program. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I, I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item? Yes, sir? Please approach.
My name is Randy Perry. I lived in Las Vegas when Republic did, started their recycling program. And we didn't have a choice. They charged us $9 a bin per month, and so you were paying the nine bucks, you might as well use it, and they did that. After, after a while, it wasn't a problem. Everybody recycled. Every one of yous here got a bottle of water in front of ya. We all drink it, we all drink bottled water, we all have that waste. I would suggest go to Waste Management, that's your, that's your disposal company here, is Waste Management, they run the field out there. They just did a Phoenix Open, and they touted how they were 100% recyclable up at, at the Phoenix Open. Put them to the test, see what they, see what solutions they can come up with. They run your landfill, they tout that they're a 100% recyclable company. Go to them, put their feet to the fire. I'm sure they can come up with some solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council on this item? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. C. Russell, I'm with the Clean City Commission, and like Sarah, I'm speaking as a citizen of, of Kingman. Something I don't know whether Eddie Tapia or Rob Owen has stats on, is how much recycles we're getting from outside the city limits in our, our cans that are, that are, are drop cans. Right now, we're getting from, from the city people that aren't on the, the program, recycle program, but since we have cut off the cleanups in the fairgrounds to using the $3 pickup homesite, the county people have no place to drop their things. So, anyone who is, who is conscious of what's going on and wants to recycle from the county, they're bringing up and dumping in our drop bins. It would be interesting to see what the rate would be if the drop bins were discontinued and we went on full city as comparison to what it is right now. And the other thing I'd like to see if there's any stat on, is to when that landfill reaches its total saturation and has to move someplace else. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to table this item and refer it back to the Clean City Commission.
I'll, I'll make a motion to table the discussion until we can get a recommendation from the Clean City Commission.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item 6A under New Business. Motion authorizing the city attorney and city manager to assist Kingman Regional Medical Center in the preparation of a development agreement based on their CEO's March 26, 2018 letter.
Thank you, Mayor Gates, members of council. These comments will be a little longer than usual for a motion to authorize action by the city attorney and city manager. When I first joined the staff here in the city of Kingman, had an opportunity to meet a lot of people, both inside the government and throughout the community. And during that time, excuse me, during that time, I became convinced that both the city of Kingman and the Regional Medical Center wanted to have a specific proposal to discuss regarding the hospital's interest in assisting with the construction of Kingman Crossing Interchange. So, my goal as the city manager became to help the Regional Medical Center develop a proposal which they, which met the city's needs as well as those of the medical center. Since the proposal before you tonight was authored by and signed by their chief executive officer, I assume that the proposal meets their needs. But I wanna talk briefly about the needs of the city. Besides a written proposal, the city wanted to retain the city property that it has just south of I-40 for future sale. As I said last meeting, we're not interested in being developers of the site, but we are interested in seeing that it's, it's used in the highest and best purposes for our community. And third, that the city wanted to minimize its financial burden. Definitely didn't want any debt obligations to ourselves as a, as a government, or be obligated to the medical center for theirs. And we wanted, lastly, under the financial part, to make sure that the city's costs were minimized. The proposal that was distributed with this item, in my opinion, meets all of those needs. It's written, it retains the city property, so that we can sell the balance of it after the, the roads are installed or constructed, and it minimizes the city financial burden. In my view, in addition to not obligating us to any debt, it realistically sets the city's exposure at somewhere between 1.5 and 2.1 million dollars. The voters in November of 2016 really made it possible for me to say what I just did, because they're the ones that allowed us to use that property and to sell it. And so, I'd be remiss if I didn't let the voters in this city know that I appreciate their support for moving forward. The highlights of this agreement are really pretty straightforward. The interchange itself, Kingman Crossing Boulevard, from the interchange north to Santa Rosa, then Santa Rosa over to Prospector, and Prospector back down to Santa Rosa are the exclusive responsibility of the medical center. The construction of a road known as Kingman Crossing Boulevard from the south side of the interstate to Southern would receive financial participation, excuse me, from the medical center, and that would be as expressed as 2/3 of the cost to build that road, or $3 million as a cap. The, the road that I just spoke of, from the freeway south to southern, would be built with a raised median and one lane of traffic each way, giving the ability in the future to expand it by one lane in each direction, so that ultimately, it would be a four-lane road with a raised median. The eight parcels that are owned by either the city or the hospital would be zoned the same, using the city's current zoning of Kingman Crossing PDD. And then that same area would have a designated sales tax revenue sharing from the new development that happens out there, that would last for no more than 20 years. And if the, the medical center recovered its costs in constructing the interstate and those other local streets that I just named, it would end earlier. And I think the most important thing for the council's perspective, and hopefully for the communities, is that everything that constitutes the agreement between the hos, the medical center and the city would be found in a development agreement, which would be drafted, and then brought back to this council for your review and approval or consideration, and the same for the alt companies and for the medical center, so that everybody will know what is included or excluded in that development agreement. The proposal that I just outlined from the hospital, I think, is good for both the city and for the medical center. It gives Kingman the opportunity to increase retail in a significant way, which of course means more stores for the people who live here, and more sales tax revenue for both the hospital and for the city. Incentives in this are market-based and private sector in nature. In other words, the medical center revenues are based on the feasibility of retail and their judgment about what will work and what won't, and their share of the sales tax revenues are based on the success of that business judgment. More broadly, the private sector and the public sector are cooperating, not being competitive, and I see that as a very good thing. It allows the city to focus on other projects. Obviously, everybody in the room and who's watching knows that the city's still committed to going forward with the Rancho Santa Fe interchange. It will use the same approach on Rancho Santa Fe that resulted in this agreement. We will rigorously evaluate the scope of the project and make sure that we're only including necessary features. We will ask the private property interest at Rancho Santa Fe to make a contribution to the success of that project, and we will make sure that the agreements that are reached are reduced to writing and available for anyone to inspect. And lastly, on Rancho Santa Fe, we have made arrangements to be in front of the State Transportation Board later this year, and so that project will continue. However, the letter from the Regional Medical Center allows us to do equally important things throughout the community. It allows us to rebuild- It allows us to rebuild some roads that people use all the time and know that they're close to needing to be rebuilt. Stockton Hill between Detroit and Airway is one example. Eastern, the whole length there, is another example. But beyond roads, it lets us talk about what we talked about tonight, a soccer complex, a community center, a fire station to serve the east side of town, whether it's a new one or relocated for. Drainage projects, there's, there's a series of important community projects which the city council and the city staff can focus on going forward that they wouldn't be able to focus on in the absence of the proposal that the regional medical center made. So I am, I am appreciative that the council has been supportive of this effort to obtain a written proposal. I have reviewed the proposal and believe it is in the very best interest of the city to take the next step. And that's why I would appreciate support for the motion under 6A, which is to authorize the city attorney and the city manager to assist the Kingman Regional Medical Center in the preparation of a development agreement based on their CEO's March 26, 2018 letter. The CEO of the KRMC, Brian Turney, is here, and you might want to ask Mr. Turney for any comments, and then I'm sure you probably have some
I do.
...people who want to speak as well.
Thank you. Mr. Turney?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, before I talk about this, I just, if it's not inappropriate, I'd just like to give you and your staff a thank you. A lot of you are aware, we had a major flood in our institution about three weeks ago. Right now, we're looking between one and $2 million worth of damage. But that night, your staff came to the rescue fire department with their squeegees, and the wastewater, Kealan Yarborough and his staff was there at 10 o'clock at night with fans, and so I just want to say thank you for the support that we received during a difficult time. It could have been much worse. Our computers, which are millions of dollars and vital to our operations, could have been compromised. But anyway, thank you very much, and just wanted to pass that on. Appreciate, I don't think I can do it much better than Mr. Bacon did as far as outlining agreement, so for the interest of time, and I don't want to rehash the reasons why we're doing this, I don't have a PowerPoint or anything else, but I just appreciate Mr. Bacon and his staff for having that, being open to that discussion. And I think, from what he has shared, and my feelings are alike, that this aligns his incentives. One piece that we have now that we didn't have when we talked last August is we have a developer that is interested in participating with this. He's excited about the opportunity. Ron Alt is his name with Alt Companies, and he's got a couple different companies he works with, but as we've talked with developers, I just want to share with you, we've done, been doing some homework since we've last visited. And as you know, A&amp;E did their report as far as opportunities in Kingman. We've talked with a couple other people that are experts in the field, one in Seattle and one out of the LA area, and taken a second look, I will share with you, they are not quite as optimistic as A&amp;E, but as we've looked at it, we do think that the time is right to move forward with this. And so we're, we're being careful as we've done our analysis, and we do think there's an opportunity with this and would like to move forward. This, what we're proposing is to take the next step, and what we've outlined in our proposal shows what happens if those next step, next steps happen, and how, what would happen progressively to make this happen. Just to alleviate any rumors, there aren't three or four or 10 big box stores that have already signed agreements. That has not happened at this point. Quite honestly, Mr. Alt can't do his job and really solidify that unless there is an agreement with the city. I sat on the Economic Development Group and last year and the year before and others, people hear the pitch about Kingman Crossing, and people basically say, "Well, when you're really ready, then we'll talk." And so that's the challenge. If you don't mind a little anecdote, when we recruit physicians, it's a challenge moving to this community, but the key thing is just getting, taking enough time to get people to take a closer look. Most of you know, retail, many of the retail companies, they have their formulas that they use, and I think key in that is getting a developer that's truly committed and interested in this project, that can really have people take a closer look. The analysis that we have shows we're right on the cusp from a population standpoint. We, if we had another 10,000 people, it would move from maybe just being interesting to compelling. And so that's going to be the job of the developers, to really move that. For example, we had a couple guys 10 years ago, eight to 10 years ago, came from Mayo Clinic Rochester. They weren't, they came to us not that interested, but as they took a closer look at the opportunities, taken a look at the community, they got interested. We ended up signing them. We now have seven radiologists, all from Mayo Clinic Rochester. They brought their two buddies that were pathologists, so we have both our radiology department, pathology department, all staffed by people from Mayo Clinic Rochester, and it started just by getting people to take a closer look. That's going to be the challenge for us as, as an organization. We do think the time is right to move forward with this, but we can't do that without a formal agreement. So that's our hope, that you'd be supportive of that. I will share, I talked to Jim today, and you know, there's one word I wished I wouldn't have put in this letter, and it where it says, "We'll move forward immediately." There's actually steps involved with that, and I just want to clarify that, make people understand that there are steps involved with moving forward with this. It has to happen as far as our own work and with the developers' work to make this happen. But we think the time's right and hope you'd be supportive of us moving forward with this, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Turney? Thank you so much. We have some people signed up. Any questions of staff at this time? We do have some people wishing to speak on this item.
Yeah, I, excuse me, I, one footnote to the comment that Mr. Turney just made about his word, it doesn't change the end of the sentence, which is the important part, which is the commitment on 2019, 12/31/19. So that's number one. Number two is, throughout these conversations, I was aided by Gary Kellogg and Greg Henry and Tina Moline, and I appreciate their, their work on this, and so thank you to the three of them as well.
And thank you. First person signed up to speak, Harley Pettit?
Mayor, Council, Harley Pettit, citizen of Kingman. We voted to sell the city property on the south side at Kingman Crossing, plain and simple. So far, the council on a split vote has not honored our vote, but it has made it more complicated. We didn't ask for an unrealistic development plan. Now, the KRMC is asking that we not sell the property until 2022. It might be a smart business move, but it's not practical. If the city gets an offer from another developer, it should be accepted. As for sharing any TPT money, I say no. The TPT money is the city's revenue, and why would we give it up, give up a percentage when we can have it all? Effectively, by sharing the TPT, the city is paying for the development. Any development by the city won't earn a rate of return on the investment. Let the buyer do the development and generate his own profit and return on his investment. Don't jeopardize the city's money, that's the taxpayers' money, on projects not approved by the tax, by the voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Dickmeyer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Doug Dickmeyer. I'm a resident of Kingman. I would encourage and support the city of Kingman moving forward in preparing a development agreement with KRMC for the construction of an interchange known as Kingman Crossing. KMRC is not only the largest employer in the city of Kingman, but the largest employer in Mojave County. The city would only benefit from having KMRC as a partner in this project. Look around, and you'll see what KMRC has done to this community. It has increased its employees by over 80% in the last 10 years, has built many off-site campuses to serve our community. Unlike other developer, developers and landowners, KMRC is here to stay and will see this to its completion. I believe the benefits are, the city will have little to no cost to start interchange, no long-term bonds putting the city in debt for years. KMRC and a private developer would assume all the risks. An expedited completion date would address public safety concerns. Also, not selling the city property until after the completion of an interchange would assure that the city would receive top dollars for its land. Finally, this would allow the city to put all its efforts into Rancho Santa Fe interchange, which many believe is the most important for a sustained, long-term growth of the city. I would encourage the council to move forward and see what KMRC proposal takes us. Thank you.
Thank you. Herberta Schroeder Baker?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Herberta Schroder Baker, and I am a resident of Kingman. I, first of all, want to say I think the KRMC's letter is excellent. With, there are a few points that I would modify, but I was very impressed by it, and I thank them for putting that offer out there. One thing I'd like to keep, you to keep in mind is, the bed tax from any motel that goes out there is not really a TPT. It is a bed tax and should be noted as a separate item and kept for the city. It is earmarked for other projects. Another thing I'd like to mention is, you are having one tourist dollar. We have not done any kind of marketing to increase our tourism in several years, not to a degree that motels coming in wouldn't be taking part of the same tourist dollar that we already have. So to give all of your TPT away on those motels is to give existing TPT away from that industry. Because even though it may be a new business coming in, let's say Marriott builds a new suite motel out there and does not relocate, there's still only X amount of people that comes to Kingman. So when you split that out, you are actually losing TPT. So that's something to think about. Also, when tourists are traveling, if they stay at that motel, they're going to eat by that motel. You're also losing some of the TPT from those businesses that are motels and restaurants, because they're not going to eat again when they hit to Kingman. So these are things that you need to consider and maybe adjust that TPT retention. Other than that, I have no problems with this, including not selling the property until after the interchange is done, because at that time you will get a higher price for it. So I think that's a sound business decision. But other than that, with those exceptions, that's what I would look at before. Thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Delmonico?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just want to echo some of the statements that have been put forth by interim city manager Jim Bacon and Brian. I think we're, we're very, very supportive of the interchange and the proposal that's been put forth by KRMC. I know Brian has done his, his show throughout multiple civic organizations in the community over the last probably six to eight months, and I can assure you at this point, not one person that I've talked to during that time has said, "Man, that's a bad idea." Everybody's been in supportive of it, and I'm truly grateful that, that city manager Bacon and Brian and your team with Tina and those that helped out to, to make this hopefully come to fruition pretty quick. The only thing that I would like to mention is, we've had, had some conversation about the Rattlesnake Wash Interchange a little bit tonight as well. I would just hope that we elect, using the same type of boilerplate model, where there's a true public-private partnership putting forth, making this go forward. I've looked at the, the projections, I've looked at the numbers, we've had multiple meetings over that over the last several months, and, and I mean, 100 million is a staggering amount of debt. I mean, it's just, it is truly staggering. So to have the public side come up and support this is, is wonderful. Lastly, when I heard about this late last week, late Friday night, I think, or Friday afternoon, I, I kind of sent out an email to, you know, quite a few people saying, "Hey, you know, this is on there, please, if you can, come by and talk." And I've received, I would say, I bet you at least a dozen phone calls, text messages, emails, and they're fully supporting this. So the business community out there, key business leaders that are out there that are unable to attend tonight, truly support this and would love to see this pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike Hindenmark?
Good evening. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Mike Hindenmark. I'm the president and CEO of the Kingman Area Chamber of Commerce, and as a voice for business, I'm a big supporter of partnerships that make sense for all parties. I believe that this partnership does that. KRMC will certainly benefit from the change, or the interchange. They should. The community also benefits substantially from this partnership as well. The partnership will allow for a new community infrastructure to be constructed on a timely schedule. It also creates a situation that will allow for taxpayers to not have to carry the full burden of the costs associated with the project. I believe a great debt of thanks is owed to both KRMC and the city of Kingman for coming this far. It is my hope that we will take another step forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time?
Mayor, council members, my name is Lynn Peterson, and I am a resident of Kingman. I'm here today in support of the proposal. I believe it's a sound fiscal proposal from the hospital. I have three main reasons for supporting this. The first is that I believe it does a great job of balancing both risk and reward for the city, for the hospital, and for the community. And I believe that a balanced risk and reward is fair, and we should go forward with fair proposals. My second reason is that it removes the burden of financial, off the financial shoulders of the Kingman citizens, and I think that's the right thing to do, and I think we should do the right thing when we have a viable, strong option like this one. My third reason is that it ensures that Kingman, as a community, will move forward. We've been talking about this for a long time, and it sure would be nice to be able to move forward tonight. So in conclusion, I believe that you've been presented with a very strong, viable option, and that you have a chance today to make a transformational step forward. So I hope that you choose to go forward with a development agreement with, with the hospital. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the council at this time?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff. I just have a little short message for you, and that's probably, this proposed agreement and letter that we've all studied and looked at, has probably been presented by the two smartest people in Kingman, present company excepted. But, I mean, they're, they're very talented. They know what's going on, and I wholly recommend you following their advice. They know what's going on, and I wholly recommend you following their advice in this here proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion authorizing the city attorney and city manager to assist Kingman Regional Medical Center in the preparation of a development agreement based on their CEO's March twenty-six, 2018 letter.
So moved.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have some discussion.
Yeah, I would just like to start by saying, I want to thank you so very much for really taking this on. You've moved us farther in four months than we've been able to do in a very, very long time. And I want to thank you and obviously K R M C representation and staff. This is just the beginning of great things for our community, and you have my heartfelt appreciation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lincoln Felder?
Yeah, if I may, just read a statement. I just would also, I'd like to thank the individuals that have been actively involved to reach this place of consensus. Certainly Mr. Turney, certainly Mr. Bacon, their respective staffs. Everyone wants to see this deal happen. Everyone wants to see this deal happen. The proposed Kingman Crossing Agreement looks like it would be a favorable agreement. And both the city of Kingman and the K R M C now have a shared vested interest in the T P T remaining at the current level. Keeping the local T P T rate is in K R M C's best interest as they will have a twenty-year window for reimbursement for the estimated, and I could be wrong, but looking at the numbers, thirty-five to forty million in debt that they would incur to construct their portion of the improvements at Kingman Crossing. And the city of Kingman has much work to do with citywide pavement preservation, as everybody knows, and also with the capital improvements plan, which currently is sixty percent unfunded. And the city of Kingman has absolutely no clue where that money would come from if that half cent would go away. So if the T P T initiative ceases as a result of this success, then, you know, the proposed Kingman Crossing project deal could go through the city very smoothly, I see. And it would provide the city with the capacity to tackle substantial other capital improvement work that is desperately needed in our city. This could include, as we have heard tonight, a new sports field complex, a new fire station that is sorely needed to improve public safety response times to the east bench of Kingman, a new fire engine for public safety, downtown beautification and streetscapes, the road projects that Mr. Bacon mentioned, such as widening Stockton Hill Road that would dramatically improve public safety on our main corridors. It is my sincere hope that those behind the proposed T P T initiative will claim this mutually beneficial, mutually equitable negotiated agreement between K R M C and the city as the success that they were pursuing, and then choose to cease the drive that would damage our city by stripping away three-point-one million of new pavement preservation funds and new capital improvement funds. The takeaway is, hopefully, everyone in the city chooses building, compromise, and creating together on all fronts instead of burning, destroying, and squabbling, which will result in all of us losing and our city continuing to be held back for how many more decades. We are all in this together. I don't want to see that, and I would hope that the majority of citizens here in Kingman don't want to see that either. So thank you very much.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Great news. Moving on to item B. Public hearing and consideration of resolution number fifty-one thirty-eight authorizing a conditional use permit for a day program for disabled individuals at thirty-nine ninety-six Lindsay Avenue. Rise Services Incorporated applicant and property owner has requested a conditional use permit for a day program from eight AM to three PM, Monday through Friday, for individuals with disabilities within an existing residence zoned R-two residential, multiple-family, low-density at thirty-nine ninety-six Lindsay Avenue. Planning and zoning commission held a public hearing on this request, and the commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the C U P as requested. Staff recommends approval.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'll be very brief like I normally am and just state, if you have any questions regarding this case, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I do have a presentation this evening, and I can show any individual slides that you'd like to see. The planning zoning commission and staff is supportive of resolution fifty-one thirty-eight, which would approve the C U P.
Okay, and any questions of staff? I did note in the information that not only were there not any complaints, but you had local residents actually spoke in support of the project.
Yes, we received two letters in support.
Wonderful. Any questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the council at this time? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifty-one thirty-eight as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to item C. Property located at seventeen seventy-six Airway Avenue from O recreational open space to C-three commercial service business. A request from Mojave County applicant and property owner for the rezoning of certain property from O recreational open space to C-three commercial service business. The planning and zoning commission held a public hearing and determined that the proposed zoning district is suitable for the location, compatible with the surrounding area, conforms to the Kingman General Plan twenty-thirty. The commission voted seven to zero to recommend approval of the rezoning request from O and C-three. Staff recommends approval.
Entertaining any questions you may have on this item. It's pretty much a housekeeping item. If you saw in your packet, there was, in the presentation, there was a map showing this is essentially an isolated piece of O recreational open space zoning surrounded by C-three. And so it's more or less to try to keep, bring this property into conformance with the surrounding zoning.
Thank you. I did have a question from a nearby business owner. This is not going to change the purpose of the facility, was her question.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other questions of staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen fifty-eight as presented.
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Item D. Public hearing and consideration of ordinance number eighteen fifty-nine, amending subsection two-six point eight-one-zero-T of the City of Kingman zoning ordinance to remove vinyl coated polyester and landscaping fabric from the list of allowable screening materials for permitted outside storage areas. Section twenty-six eight-ten of the City of Kingman zoning ordinance lists the allowable screening materials for open space storage in commercial and industrial zoning districts. The planning and zoning commission recently expressed a concern over the use of landscaping fabric as a screening material on fencing. The City of Kingman Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the proposed text amendment and voted seven to zero to recommend certain text changes. Staff recommends approval.
Again, I'd be happy to entertain any questions on this matter. This was spurred by some concerns over the appearance of the use of landscaping material as fencing screening materials, especially in the downtown area.
You know, as I was driving in, I noted a property that did seem to have what you're talking about.
Yes.
So what would enforcement look like? Is that once that deteriorates, then they would have to replace it with something else? How would you enforce this?
If this, yes, if this went into effect, then they would be able to continue to use the landscaping material. But once it deteriorated, we'd have to ask them to replace it with something that would be permissible, like slats or solid fencing or something along those lines.
Thank you. Are there other questions of staff on this item?
The P and Z unanimously recommended this removal, right?
They did. It was a sub to zero recommendation.
Any other questions of staff? Thank you. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number eighteen fifty-nine as presented.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Moving on to item E. Resolution number fifty-one forty-one for the creation of a water sustainability committee. Resolution number fifty-one forty-one will authorize the creation of a water sustainability committee. The committee will be comprised of members from the City of Kingman Public Works Department, a member of the City of Kingman Engineering Department, three members from Mojave County, and two members of the public with water resource expertise or interest, all of whom shall be appointed by the common council. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mayor Gates. Members of the council. I've asked Rob Owen to join me because he was part of a group that redirected the original conversation. This goes back to last fall when councilmember Lingonfelder suggested that the city ought to consider having a sustainability commission. And so several of us from the city and Nick Hunt, who was here to do the briefing about three work sessions ago, got together. And the result is what's before you in resolution fifty-one forty-one. It's a committee, not a commission. And that is intentional because it's intended to signify that this is a working group that would consist of people like Rob, people like Nick, Tim Walsh, Shannon Summers, Greg Henry, folks like that. And then there would be two citizen appointments, the people who are invested in water as an issue and want to be involved identifying projects that would be good for the region and being involved in a citizen education effort. So with apologies to councilmember Lingonfelder for hijacking his original idea, we present to you our recommendation to go forward on this resolution. And probably councilmember Lingonfelder ought to get the first question or comment.
You know, I wouldn't say that you hijacked my idea at all. I mean, this brings recharge efforts, sustainability efforts, the one water solution to the forefront. And it's time for us, it's beyond past time for us to get into the game. And I thank you for taking it on. I thank the council for being willing to consider it. I think it's in the best interest of our community, considering what's going on in our region and in the state. And I know Nick Hunt is not sabbatical, but, you know, all of the individuals that you mentioned are very smart. And they are going to be, this is going to be a very powerful committee for us.
We would also be willing to generate a list of suggested names, I mean, beyond two, for the citizen members, if you'd like, and you're free to add to or reject that advice as well. But the staff people that would populate this committee, as we understand it, pretty much I shared those names with you.
Thank you. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number fifty-one forty-one for the creation of a water sustainability committee as presented.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution fifty-one forty-one to authorize the creation of a water sustainability committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the final order of business this evening to adopt a notice of intent to set public hearing dates for a home rule option. The November twenty-eighteen Kingman general election will include a ballot question relating to an alternative to the state imposed expenditure limitation. Because the state imposed expenditure limitation does not take into consideration expanded services or services provided to citizens outside city limits, the state constitution allows citizens to vote on alternatives to the limitation. Home rule option, pure or with voter-approved exclusions, or permanent base adjustment option. Staff's recommendation is to ask the voters to renew the home rule with exclusions option and adopt a notice of intent to set public hearing dates for June fifth and June nineteenth on the proposed home rule with exclusions option. Well, I know this was a work session item.
Yeah, exactly. I was, thank you for saying what I was going to say.
Well, I don't know if there's any more questions of staff on this?
You know, before the, I'm thankful for the work session on this particular item because I went into this after the research and I thought that the pure home rule option just sounded like it would make better sense. But the recommended approach is a little more conservative, and I understand why. It's logical to go back out in twenty-twenty to ask for maybe a pure home rule option. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Okay, so you want to adopt a notice?
Adopt a notice to set up the public hearings and support of a home rule with exemptions option.
Exclusions option.
Exclusions, pardon me.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, department reports.
Not for me tonight.
Okay. Then we'll move on to item eight, announcements by mayor, council members, city managers. Want to start?
Sure. Just a quick update. I did attend the Main Street Conference last week in Kansas City, Missouri. And it's very hard to just summarize it in a few sentences, but it was very helpful to hear from communities. Hundreds of communities were there, where they were represented. But communities that have been using Main Street for decades and have really gotten a lot out of it. What I heard a lot about is how Main Street directly impacts economic development in a community. It builds community pride. It increases property values. It helps create an appealing destination. It supports historic preservation. It supports small business. So I have no doubts now that expanding our Main Street program here in Kingman would be really beneficial to our city, and it would help us reach our goals in downtown revitalization. So that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoyt?
I have nothing to add. Thank you.
I just want to wish everyone a happy, happy spring and get out there and enjoy our parks and pools once they open.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor? Really, nothing. Okay.
This Friday, first Friday, everybody that's watching, everybody that's in the audience, come down, support your downtown in Kingman, have some food, visit all the businesses down there. It's an amazing event that every month, I think, is probably just going to get bigger and bigger. So that's this Friday, first Friday, the Main Street Downtown, right? Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Christ?
Nothing. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council requests for future work session agenda items and/or calendar adjustments.
My requests are already on the calendar, and I'm hopeful that they don't get moved out further.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor? This is a follow-on to what councilmember Staley mentioned. Economic Development Department's been doing a lot of work in the downtown over the last month or two. And I think it is appropriate to have a work session on what's going on with downtown and give council a chance to not only get updated on that, but engage in a conversation. So I'll be scheduling that item as soon as we can figure out how to make the calendar work.
Okay. Did you?
I would just hope councilmember Staley mentions Trails. That's all I'll say. Trails. That's yours. Which one is it? The fifteenth?
Fifteenth.
May fifteenth?
Or Whitecliff. Hang on a minute.
I don't see Trails. Where is it?
Whitecliff Wagon Trail.
What?
Whitecliff Wagon Trail.
Where is it?
Second item on the fifteenth.
I have golf course RFP and bricks on sixty-six.
That's all I have.
I have, mine says it is.
You have the real one.
I have, I'm sorry. It should be the same one.
But it's on there.
It's on there.
Okay, great.
I just don't have my invisible glasses. Sorry. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Miles?
I would just ask that the residential street parking ordinance is not be moved any further back. I really believe it is a health and safety issue in our community. And having spoken this past week with some people who have, whose lives have been dramatically affected by the motorhomes- by the motorhomes that are on residential streets and the accidents that happen, we really need to address it and change the ordinance. Thank you.
So, it was a plea to leave it on, at the 5th of June?
I mean, I would move it, but I think I am out of town on the 15th, and so, if there's a way to move it up closer, then that would be great.
You and I can discuss this.
It really is an important health and safety issue in our community.
I'll explain why it's on, tune on the calendar instead of another date, and you tell me what you think.
Oh, okay. Excellent. Another Trails.
No, another, yeah, well, exactly. It would be the same meeting.
And yesterday, I took a meeting, and fortunately, Chief DeVries was able to sit in with me. We met with the public policy partners who had previously met with the county board of supervisors, and this is regarding the national opioid crisis and litigation options. All I'm looking to do is I'll share this information and see if this is something the City of Kingman is interested in getting involved in. We're talking about litigation that would be of no cost to the city, but whatever we receive would be able to go towards treatment programs and offsetting the costs that the City of Kingman has incurred. So, I don't know if this is a work session item as much as something that staff might want to vet a little bit and make sure. It's my understanding that a lot of the initial work is data collection has already been done by the city and county, so.
You know, this is something, since you brought it up, that I've been thinking about it for a while. I think that we should discuss, as a city, creating a community-wide town hall to get all of the people that would be involved in the opioid crisis, whether it's the hospital, the police department, mental health, come together as a community and start talking about new ways, not prosecuting, new ways to tackle this crisis, because it is hitting us hard. And I don't think that we're doing enough, but I think that if we fill the room with the right people, we might be able to find some solutions to really help our community and to help the people who are struggling, whether it's families or it's people who are addicted. I think that we could do more, and I think that with a great team that we could start addressing this issue a little bit more proactively.
With council's scent, I will ask the chief to staff both of those items. The one that Councilmember Staley just outlined probably take a little, little while longer to get, and hopefully, we could get a quick turnaround on the...
This one is a little more time-sensitive.
Yeah, correct.
Thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember Yocum? Do you have anything you wish to add? Okay? Councilmember Wade? Councilmember Staley? Thank you very much. I think that takes us to the end of the meeting. Therefore, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.